Six, two thousand and twenty-three meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board. I apologize for the late start. We're in a new location today. Start with our script. Select Board Chair Josh Levine. I will be confirming that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear you. Members, when I call your name, please respond on the affirmative. Mark Gold.
Here.
Dan Zwerke.
Here.
Tom McHughson.
Here.
Beneath Hamavati.
Here.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond on the affirmative. Lynn Simmons.
Here.
Mike Barbieri.
Here.
This open meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board is convened in person via Zoom webinar as posted on the agenda and town's website identifying how the public may join. There is no chat or Q and A function. All the materials for this meeting are available on the agenda posted on longmeadowma.gov. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless I know what other ones. This meeting will feature resident comments. For residents attending the meeting in person, please raise your hand when we get to the comments section of the meeting, and I'm calling you to approach the microphone. For residents participating in the meeting via Zoom webinar format, please use the raise hand icon bottom of the screen. The meeting moderator will promote you to panelists, unmute you, and give you permission to speak. You join the webinar by phone, type star nine to raise your hand, and star six to mute, unmute. Residents who wish to speak will identify their names and addresses. Each individual is afforded three minutes for comments. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. If anyone is attendance in attendance is recording this meeting, please announce yourself now. All right, move on to the political allegiance.
Political allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Okay, so first on the agenda today, we have the Select Board reorganization. So it's been a, it's been a year of, and it's been my pleasure to serve as chair and let it rip, see what happens. So I would like to nominate Mark Gold to be Chair for next year. A second?
Second.
And discussion. Marcus served as Vice Chair. I know he served as Chair before. I think it's good. We have a lot of things coming up, a lot of charter changes. I think it'd be good to have him on the hand, in the chair. So you're doing a good job. All right, there's nothing further? All is in favor? All is opposed? Any abstentions? Any new motions?
Make a motion to nominate Tom McHughson as Chair. I second.
Any discussion? All is in favor? All is opposed? Pick over now? Okay. As Vice Chair? I don't know. I'm not just asking for a nomination to be Vice Chair. Nominate Dan Zwerke?
I second.
Okay, any other discussion?
Yeah, so although I do appreciate it, Josh, due to my duties on long-range planning consuming a lot of my time, I would prefer to have somebody else serve as Vice Chair.
Okay.
Then I move to appoint Josh Levine as Vice Chair. Second?
Okay, so we're starting to vote on the motion. First, first motion for Dan Zwerke. Would you want to draw the motion, Josh?
I'll withdraw the motion.
Okay, so that's withdraw. And then we're going to vote on the motion for Josh to be Vice Chair. And off we go. All is in favor? Opposed? Because I'm a head and I don't have a court. Any motions for a court decision?
Make a motion to nominate beneath Hamavati as clerk.
I'll second that. Okay, we'll call off the vote. All is in favor? Okay, we're organized. Thank you. I, take your chair, Tom? Or are you? Oh, no, no, no. That was me. That was me. Thanks. I didn't know. So yeah, I just came back from California. It's been a full day of hiking and stuff. There's somebody who also looks like he kind of hurt. So the meeting was supposed to take place on the fifteenth. I was not going to be part of. And so I'm a bit surprised with this foundation. I changed a great order for the board. If the board supported this way, I would do the best job I can. I'd like to thank Josh again, Josh Levine, for doing such a great job as Chair. You know, it was nice to have a lawyer on there, you know? It did make things a lot easier for us and I appreciate that. And I know that you want to go beyond, you know, the worst that the board members make. You know, every member of this board is an important contributor and, you know, I appreciate all the work done by board members and I feel fortunate to be serving as a Chair of the board. It's such a hardworking board and so caring and concerning and working with a great town manager. And so the next on the agenda is Select Board announcements. And so the Select Board Summer Meetings will have a change in meeting location for the remainder of the summer of two thousand and twenty-three due to the air handler replacement project at Long Meadow High School. We will meet in the Adult Center Multipurpose Room this summer. Hopefully return to the meeting room eight fifteen at the Long Meadow Public Schools Central Office in September. These meetings will be streamed live by LCT as usual, and there will be virtual options for attendance as well. The age-friendly task force listening series, session series, the Long Meadow Range Planning Series Committee, age-friendly task force seeks input from the community to help create a vision to make Long Meadow an age-friendly community for all. Residents aged fifty and older, caregivers, and service providers are encouraged to attend. The age-friendly listening series will include one virtual and two in-person sessions. The first listening session will be held via Zoom on this Wednesday, June twenty-eighth, from six to seven thirty P M. In-person session dates will be announced soon, and you can visit longmeadowmas.gov slash thirteen fifty-eight, Long Meadow Long Range Plan, for additional information. Great. We have a public hearing, which is scheduled for seven thirty. So why don't we, instead of rather than open that, we'll start with the interviews for boards and committees. So we could start with our Board of Successors, appointment Michael Zella, are you here? No, he isn't. Okay. And the Board of Health, Michelle Keenmore, for reappointment?
They're on Zoom.
Oh, okay. Or is Mr. Zella on?
I don't believe he's.
Okay. Run along, what's on? Are three of you all ready?
I'm sorry, the last one.
Okay. So if we have Michelle and Elliot Greenberg and Tass Angelides.
Yep, they're on.
Okay, Tass is there. And Elliot, is he?
Thank you, Mr. Greenberg. My TV.
Oh, there.
Oh, you're, oh, so I made you.
Thanks. Why don't pull up to the chair, Elliot, so we can. We'll be able to see you on camera there. All right. So we appreciate you guys stepping up for all of you are reappointments. So that means you had a good experience, I hope. So we thank you for coming back to us. I don't know if we could just ask each of you to introduce yourself, and we'll just start with Michelle, and then Elliot, and then Tass.
Hi, I'm Michelle Keenmore.
And your address and why you moved here?
Sure. I'm one sixteen Brooks Road here in town, and I'd like to continue my service on the Board of Health because I've really enjoyed working with the other board members. I feel like we are tasked with a very important mission of being overseeing a lot of the health issues here in town and working closely with Finn McCool to make sure that the town continues to have strong leadership in the area of health. Coming up, we have Long Range Planning Committee going on in town, and I feel like every single one of the topics for the Long Range Planning Committee could certainly benefit from having input from Board of Health members and having that a, that aspect of the long-range planning focus on health issues as well as the other issues that are before them. And I feel like we can contribute in that way. And I also feel like by bringing a public health perspective to the board, I'm able to offer something a little bit different than the other board members, as recently evidenced by putting a highlight on the sanitation issues that were happening for the field workers, the West Road Fields. And I, you know, I would definitely like to be able to continue to contribute to these issues in town. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. And as we know, without any planning, you know, we had to scramble around to last minute when COVID hit Long Meadow, and we did a great job, but it would be nice if we also planning in terms of public health. So we appreciate it. And just your background again, could you just quickly tell us?
Sure. I have my doctorate from the Johns Hopkins School of Hygiene and Public Health, and subsequent to that, I've had experience working in industry, doing research in regenerative medicine. I have experience in working for government. I was a reviewer for the Food and Drug Administration, and most recently I have changed to becoming an educator, and I teach at Western New England University. So I have quite a range of experience.
Yes. Any questions from the board? Okay, thank you. And we'll move next to Elliot Greenberg. If you could just tell us your name, address, and.
Hi, Elliot Greenberg. I live at one twenty-two Ellington Street. I have lived in Long Meadow since nineteen ninety-one. I'm a physician, so I really appreciate Michelle's background. I think it's a great addition to the board, but I'm one of the more traditional physicians on the board. And I'd like to continue my participation because, number one, we've been active members of the Long Meadow community for a long time. I'm somebody who's had a lot of experience working on several nonprofits. I was on the Special Miss Massachusetts Board for ten years. I just went off the board. So I see the benefits of public health needs in the community, and I just think we need an active participation in all of the issues that have to do with public health and board health needs in the community. Originally, I was just going to say if I could ask, if I could say ditto to what Michelle said, but I guess that probably wasn't appropriate. That's really it. I think there's a real need for active participation, especially with people that have the experience of living in the community, raising their children in the community, and haven't been a physician at Bay State for the last thirty years. I think have a pretty good handle on the community. I remember the last time I interviewed, Mark asked me, or somebody had asked me if I would feel comfortable making decisions that might be uncomfortable, and they used the Ellington Street Halloween COVID experience, which we sort of instigated. So I just see, you know, I see the benefit in the need for a strong Board of Health to be able to handle questions and, and work with the community to make decisions, sometimes decisions that are not easy to make.
Right. It's good that you mentioned Halloween during COVID because that was one of the biggest things confined to the board, maybe in the history of board. With all the kids who were waiting to hear what the answer was going to be.
Yeah. I don't know if I should say I'm sorry. You're welcome.
Any questions for the board? Okay, thank you very much. And next we'll go to Tass Angelides, looking for a reappointment also.
Yeah, I'm Tass Angelides. We moved into Long Meadow in nineteen eighty-four. Since moving up from New York, I have been at Bay State Medical Center until my retirement two years ago. I have been Chief of the Division of Pediatric Gastroenterology during that interim. I have been Professor at Chan Medical School and Adjunct Associate Professor at Tufts. I joined the committee as an associate just as the pandemic broke out. And I must say that I've just been very proud of our committee, not me, but the committee in general under the direction of our Chair. As Michelle pointed out, we have a fabulous group who work very well together, even when we disagree, nonetheless work together extremely well and are really focused on the health needs across a wide array of health issues in our town. I have just completed my two-year tenure as President of Hand and District Medical Society, and I remain on two important committees of Mass Medical Society statewide. And that gives also, I think, a good focus and a good conduit to our own committee with regard to issues that pertain to the state in general with regard to health issues. I am also our committee's representative on the Long Range Planning Committee, which I find incredibly important, and I would certainly like to continue that as well.
Thanks. Thank you for all those. Any comments or questions? Yes.
And I have questions really for all three, and that's why I waited.
Okay.
The issue we had three years ago were pretty serious when it came to how the community responded to COVID. And at that point, the perception, at least if not the reality, was Board of Health was in charge as opposed to the town manager, the Select Board, and whether it's, I mean, Halloween, as Dr. Greenberg pointed out, or some of the other things. And I guess my question is, has the Board of Health, at least those who are currently there, looked reflectively on the things that we did well, but particularly the things we could have done better back then? Because there was a lot of confusion, to be polite, and a lot of things did not go well. There were a lot of disagreements, and we were working in an area clearly of minimal, if not conflicting, opinions on everything from the medical seriousness to how this was done. And I'm just wondering if there's been any retrospective look by the members of the Board of Health on what we could have done, should have done, and more importantly, what we'd do differently next time around? And I don't know who wants to take that, but it struck me as something we should talk about.
I will comment on the fact that I wasn't on the board then, but I'm very aware of a lot of the issues that came up. And there was a lot of confusion when the, and I'm using the Halloween experience as a specific example, of who was in charge. And we approached the Select Board. We got referred to the Board of Health. The Board of Health hadn't made a recommendation or an opinion at that point. I think they, if I recall, they agreed with us, but they hadn't addressed the issue up to that point. I don't know. I actually would defer to Dr. Angelides. I don't know if anybody has looked, if the board has looked at it in a retrospective fashion. I think it's a good idea. I think it's good for there to be clarity on things like that and who, who is primarily in charge of making the recommendations. But I would refer to Dr. Angelides to discuss whether it's been discussed at the Board of Health part of my participating.
Mr. Angelides?
So, yeah, that's just an excellent insight into what was transpiring between March and of two thousand and twenty and the early spring of two thousand and twenty-one. Board of Health, by and large, is constrained, as were the emergency services, by dictates and guidelines from the state Board of Health. And so we did not have complete leeway in terms of things that we could do. In addition to that, since this is the first time that our community and communities across the country experienced this earthquake, it was not always clear what the lines of division were between the Board of Health and other entities in charge of emergency services in town. We worked it out after some period of time. And by the way, Finn, Mr. McCool, was excellent in that regard in helping to guide us through some of these, you know, this, you know, guidelines and, you know, who does what. But we have learned some lessons, I think, from that point on, and I do think it's not a bad idea, not at all a bad idea, to sort of have a convocation of the various groups who were managing this crisis in two thousand and twenty and twenty-one, and review with all of us present what went on, what could have been done better, what was flat out wrong. There was very little that was flat out wrong, but what could be better? And how do we prepare ourselves going forward? And I do think the Long Range Planning Committee, as part of its mandate, should be looking at some of this too, and I'll certainly want to participate in promoting that. By the way, although, you know, this is something that has been ongoing, I do again want to emphasize that our committee was almost always in unison with regard to our conclusions and our wisdom, such as it was our collective wisdom, about what was best for our community. So I don't really think that there was any sort of confusion, at least among ourselves, when we had the opportunity to express our points of view.
Okay. Michelle, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I also wanted to say that this is certainly, I think the question is, excuse me, excellent, and I think it's incredibly relevant to where we are right now. This has been a discussion that has happened in the larger public health community too in terms of what, what happened and in terms of what was done correctly. Where we still need to learn lessons, particularly in the case of communication and messaging and in terms of gaining public trust, so that when recommendations are given, that people are more likely to adopt those recommendations. And I think these are definitely, this is a conversation to have with the community and to have it going forward so that, again, we establish a basis for trust when we do not have a crisis situation, so that should another, God forbid, crisis arise, a public health crisis, that we already have established strong lines of communication and, and so that people know that we are serving on the committee for, for the community and for their good.
Thank you. Very, thank you. Any other questions for the board? Okay, so we will get back in touch with you as far as the appointment process in a couple of weeks. Okay, thank you, Ron.
Thank you very much.
And now we have, is Judith, well, did Michael Zella come back?
One's there, one's there.
Okay. And how about Council of Aging Board of Directors, Judith Delong? If you want to come up and have a seat, give us your, your name and your address. I imagine you're interested in a three-year term? Okay.
I'm Judith Delong, and I've lived in, I first moved to Long Meadow in nineteen seventy-three, and I was here until nineteen ninety-nine. My husband and I moved to Maine for twelve years and ran a nonprofit. And then when we retired, we decided to come back here because we loved Long Meadow. We raised our kids here. I worked here as a teacher, and it's home, so that's why we came back.
Okay. And do you have much experience with adults and seniors?
Well, I have a lot of experience with kindergarten and first grade, but no, since I moved back, I've been doing Meals on Wheels, and my contact with the people there has been wonderful. The pandemic was a little bit difficult. We didn't get to see the people, but now we're back, so we're in contact with them. And I don't know, it just, it certainly did open my eyes to a lot of the needs of the seniors in this town. So I thought this was a good fit.
That's why you're here.
That's why I'm here.
Okay. Any questions for board members? Come on.
Thank you for applying. We appreciate you taking the effort to apply. One of the concerns or issues of the Council on Aging is actually, what's the role of the Council on Aging relative to the Adult Center, the Adult Center staff? And we have two wonderful and sometimes some great competing organizations that work to support the Council on Aging. It's Paloka and L A C T F. And so I'd just like to hear your, your perception or thoughts on what kind of role you'd like to see the Council on Aging play relative to the department and relative to those other supporting agencies.
And the role that they've played so far is what is it?
Well, the supporting agency organizations or nonprofits, they fundraise primarily and have in the past funded certain aspects of the Adult Center activities.
Okay. So, you know, I would think that since the role of the council is to advocate for interests and needs of seniors, that they should certainly be aware of all of the activities and all of the contributions of those agencies. And I'm assuming they are at this point, but you said they're conflicting roles?
Not necessarily conflicting. I mean, there, you know, there's two agencies both trying to help out.
Right.
Some may say sometimes they step on each other's toes, or may not say that, I don't know. But the issue was kind of walking the fine line between two supporting agencies and the department head who runs the department.
Well, I assume that the council just should have some kind of a say over the contributions of those two organizations and, and step in if there is any kind of conflict.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, we need to start a hearing. It was at seven thirty-one, and so it's a Long Meadow Package Store transfer and license application. Thank you.
Are you expecting anyone to join the group on Zoom or nothing's going on?
Okay. We give a motion to approve the hearing. We move. It's like a bit. And vocal call? We don't have to have that? Okay. All right, so the hearing is now open.
Play out the vote on it, but you don't have to do a vocal call.
Oh, you don't have to do a vocal, okay then. All is in favor of opening the hearing. Okay, so we just want to present what you plan to do.
Sure, sure. Good evening, members of the Select Board. My name is Rich Slepek. I'm an attorney from Western Massachusetts, and we're in front of you this evening. I'm an attorney from Westwood, Massachusetts, and we're in front of you this evening and for a license transfer for what is known as the Long Meadow Package Store here in town at four hundred Long Meadow Street. The app, the application is before you, so I'm not going to go through all the details of the application. I'll answer any questions that you have, but the current license holder is the Bottle and Brew Inc. And my clients are sitting to my right, right here, uh, Mayhew and Maury Gohill. I might mispronounce the thing, but I'll do my best. They have set up a new LLC for purposes of this operation. Um, the LLC is Am Sri Say Ram LLC. I set that LLC up for them. It's a husband and wife team. They, uh, own the LLC as fifty-fifty and they are going to be operating the business on an equal, um, partnership level. Included in the package was a signed purchase and sale agreement for the, uh, purchase of the, uh, of the existing package store. And it's a very simple transaction. There's no bank financing involved. This is a hundred percent cash deal. The purchase price is four hundred thousand dollars, um, plus inventory. Inventory will be determined, um, as always, the night before the actual closing. And whatever the inventory is, these sellers have agreed to take back paper over a five-year period at four percent. So it's four hundred thousand dollars cash plus a promissory note. As indicated, there's no bank financing involved. Um, in addition there too, we've negotiated, um, at great length, the amendment to the existing lease. Um, the landlord at this building is Rinaldi's Realty LLC, Joseph Rinaldi. I've worked with him very closely and the, uh, the lease terms, uh, they're coming upon the end of their first ten-year term. It was a ten-year lease, uh, twenty twenty-five will be the end of that. Uh, but there are now three five-year options thereafter. So they have another fifteen years worth of options on a five-year basis. That'll take the lease out to twenty forty at a minimum. So, um, Mr. Mayhew is a registered nurse here, Bay State Medical Center, uh, in Springfield. And his wife is, uh, is, is a husband, like that, that, at the current moment. But her intention is to jump into this with both feet and, and work together as a husband and wife team. Um, they have some prior experience and one of their cousins owned a, a package store in Springfield over the past three years and they've worked in the business. Um, I, I've met with them on numerous occasions and they're, they're, they're into this big time. They're, 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 they're all into it. They've done their homework, they've done their inspections, um, and they're prepared to move forward and they have the funds to do so. So it's a pretty straightforward transaction. The application is complete. We just seek for your approval tonight and obviously moves on to the next level at the A B C C. And upon their approval, then we'll be ready to close. So we're just, the, the closing is just pending the approval process and I know it's a, it's a painfully slow process when, when it leaves Long Meadow. So that being said, we'd be happy to answer any questions, but this is a pretty straightforward, uh, transaction.
Just on page two, it tells us about the application of transfer license and, um, the residential addresses of individuals and I see social, social security numbers and neighbors being blocked out. But later it gives an address and, um,
Elm Street, West Springfield.
Yeah, and that's the aggregate.
That's the, yeah, the condominiums on Elm Street, West Springfield, yeah. No, 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 the, I, I meant to indicate that at the beginning. They do live in West Springfield. They live at the condominiums on Elm Street, West Springfield.
Great.
Yep. They're the local residents.
All right. Uh, any thoughts from the board members? Yes.
First to you, sir. Um, so I, I do a lot of liquor licensing as well and I, as a senior client's manager, it's a huge responsibility. So you're tasked with making sure everyone is, uh, all your employees are following rules. If anything goes wrong at the store, it's on you. Uh, have you been tips trained to learn how to check IDs?
Yes.
Okay, so you're aware of, uh, will you be having a scanner in the store?
Yeah, uh, right now, the right now owner doesn't have, because like, I think he knows most of the people and he always checked, but when we will close the business, we will buy that, we are going to buy the scanner.
So you're going to scan absolutely everything?
Yeah, it's, uh, like I, I, like, I did homework, it's a six hundred dollar something, but it's a really worthy. It's a really worthy, yeah.
We'd hate to see it back here.
Yeah.
That's what we'll have.
Right.
Um, and my other question was on the parking. You know, on the lease, the parking is what the parking is. And you're aware that a new restaurant went in next door? Uh, and so there has been, I've heard from you, people saying CBS has heard of parking.
Right.
And are you, so you're aware of the issue?
Yes. So, yeah, I tried to convince my, like, landlord to, okay, so there are four row of parking. I tried to convince him if you, because I also worked in a CBS and right now I am in healthcare. So I understand if someone come to the pharmacy like a age, like seventy, seventy-five, eighty, they, if they don't find a parking and they have to pick up the biscuits and they have to walk by it. So I tried to convince him, just leave one line for the CBS. And if three or four spot for us and two lane, it will be enough for the restaurant. But he not agreed, so, yeah, but I tried to convince him because the, another reason in a restaurant, it's a sitting restaurant, so minimum the person who will go inside, it will take minimum thirty minutes to one hour depending over the group there. So it will take a long time to finish a dinner and go out. So my idea was that like either CBS or package store, because my next store is a bagel store, it closed at a three and restaurant started at a four or five something. So there wouldn't be any problem for bagel store, but us and CBS, if they give some spot to us, it wouldn't be problem for the customer also, but.
They'd agree.
Yeah, a better lawyer maybe would.
Yeah, just two things. Point out that, that the parking lot is town property. It's a town lot. It's not owned by Rinaldi's.
Okay.
It's owned by the town.
Okay.
So we need to have, re, renew our agreement with Rinaldi's or all the, all the, the lesses there. But he doesn't own the lot. He can't make agreements with the lot. And in fact, truth be told, it's a public parking lot. I could drive there, park there at seven o'clock in the morning, leave my car there till nine o'clock at night because I took a bus into Boston or something and everybody else can too. And I'm not advocating that people do that, but it's public parking. So just, just so you're aware of what you're.
We wouldn't know that.
Let us know, yeah.
Because he negotiated in the lease as though he had control of the parking lot.
He does not have control.
Well, that's probably why he couldn't give anything, any commitments to it.
So the, the other, the other comment I would just make is that, and I just reuse something that Mr. Levine said. We welcome new, new, you know, business owners to town. We love to have you here. I don't see any reason to be here. I will guarantee you that the police will do checks. They do checks, you know, Josh, we don't want to see you back here. Please don't come back here. Do your due diligence, check everybody because we take our, we take our liquor licenses seriously and we do have a rather steep progression of, of penalties for people who are selling to minors. Don't want to see you here. Hopefully you won't see you here. And I wish you the best of luck in, in this venture. I will just say that I've been on this board long enough that I was on the board when we transferred it to, to current owner, transferring it to you. So we're more than happy to do that. We're welcome to Long Meadow.
The, the seller taking back paper on the inventory, I know you have no financing on the source. I usually provide a draft note. Uh, I, I don't know if I, I've never not provided it, so I just don't yet. I don't know with the A B C C.
Right, if they want one, I can draft one in a, in a minute. Uh, I've tracked hundreds of them. So it's just, we don't have a number yet, so I didn't, you know, I didn't, I didn't know between now and then, maybe if the inventory goes down, they may want to pay cash when there will be a moot point. But, um, if the A B C C, you and I have a, usually have a phone call relationship with them. When, when it finally gets into the local, um, representative from the A B C C usually calls me and says I need A B or C and I'll provide one in two seconds. But yeah, I know, I know the drill.
Okay, um, yeah, there's obviously four businesses and applications in that parking lot. Hopefully you guys can look out something. For everybody. The, you know, besides only age drinking, of course, there's the folks who would purchase, uh, when they're already inebriated. And they are sort of getting a backup bottle to keep going, logical, and they may be driving. And so I think one is, of course, the folks who pull up in a car to do that sort of thing. But even if a person was to walk up, you know, you need to be able to identify if they are inebriated. They won't be happy when you say, I'm not going to sell you an alcohol. But as part of your job, as part of your responsibility in town, and we'll support you a hundred percent. And it's all the folk who please to fight. So, um, you know, we wish you luck with your business.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming forward with this. Any other discussion before we close the hearing? Okay. I can unmute. Okay, second?
Second.
Okay. Your votes, all those in favor? Okay, the hearing is closed. And we, you know, which thing we have a motion to accept this transfer?
I'm eager to be, being this transfer, liquor license from Long Meadow Package Store is proposed, second.
We just have to also remove a sixteen-seat binding that has no detrimental impact to school, seminary church in, like, Sydney within five.
August New Church. So, same motion?
Same motion, just add, and I determine that there's no detrimental effect to school, seminary church within five.
I know. I'll add that, a motion that you determine there's no detrimental effect to the church that's within five hundred feet.
Second.
Any further questions? All those in favor? Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Best of luck.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so we can go back to the, um, the interviews? So we'll move to this. So, any, Michael Zoller?
No, he will be on the July seventeenth.
Okay, so we were looking at Andrea Chason, is she on line? And Catherine McGonigal, both for the Cultural Council?
It's, conservation commission.
David?
This might be, uh.
We have either that or later.
Um, you're on, Andrea Chason and David Demare.
Oh, yeah, Andrea Chason, David, conservation commission.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, this is Andrea.
Yes. Hey, um, you're, I think it's your Andrea, voices were weird. And do we have David?
I don't see him.
Okay. All right, Andrea, if you could just start with, uh, introduce yourself, give us your address and your interest in the Conservation Commission. Can you hear us? Can you hear us?
Okay, yes, yes. It's having some trouble hearing through the, now you're coming through loud and clear. Okay.
Okay. Well, yeah, your name and address and your interest in the cultural commission?
I am. Do you need me to, um, identify myself? This is Andrea Chason, two thirty-six Crestwood. And I'm interested in the, uh, I believe it's the application for the Conservation Commission tonight.
Yes, it is. For reappointment?
Mm-hmm.
Andrea, can you tell us why you're interested in the, in being reappointed?
Well, I've been on the Conservation Commission for, I don't know, I, at least, uh, six to seven years. And we are more involved now in really working on, um, maintaining the property in a much more reasonable manner. And I'd like to continue my involvement with protecting the property in Long Meadow and seeing the work that I've done so far come to fruition. So.
Okay, thank you. Um, any questions from the board on this reappointment?
I'm just.
Oh, yes, Dan?
I would, yeah, I just want to make a comment. Um, Andrea, I, I'm, obviously I'm the liaison to your committee. Uh, you're very active. Um, about a year or so ago, you brought in front of the board the Homeworks, um, I guess petition or letter that we signed. I was just curious, um, it's been successful, but what are the numbers? Do you have any information, um, on that project?
Um, so, let's see, things that I've been, uh, heavily involved in, I started the Earth Day cleanup for the town. This will be going into the third year and that's been very successful and that's part of, I'm sorry, is there?
I was asking about the Homeworks project with Mass Save?
The Energy Conservation Committee.
I'm sorry, I thought we were on the Conservation Commission. The energy, are we talking about energy sustainability now?
I'm also serving with you as a liaison to the commission that you're applying for right now.
Yes, I, I, I'm applying for both and I thought this was about the Conservation Commission, but it's also about the energy and sustainability. The big project that we're involved with now with energy and sustainability is a combination of increasing home energy audits and getting the community to really participate in learning how to reduce their overall energy use. And ultimately we'll be doing more education around all of the new Mass Save projects. So I was also, uh, instrumental in securing a grant for five thousand dollars for the town for Mass Save for community education. Um, and definitely would like to continue that. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments for the board? Ready, Andrea? Thank you. And we'll be in touch, uh, when you make a decision. Enjoy. Thank you.
Oh, my goodness. Okay, thank you so much. You guys have a great evening.
And so the next would be the Cultural Council, Stephanie Delmeda and Catherine McGonigal. Would they? Stephanie, hand up. Good evening, uh, Catherine and Stephanie. Um, so you're applying, there's three-year terms, uh, for the Cultural Council. Could we start with Stephanie and then Catherine and just give us your name and address and, uh, your interest in the Cultural Council?
Hi, um, my name is Stephanie Delmeda. I live at thirty-three Allen Road. I've only been living in Long Meadow for a couple of years, uh, now, but I've been impressed with what the, um, committee has done so far and participated in a lot of the events. I also have four children in town and who have benefited and I would love to, to join and be part of it.
Okay, thank you. And Catherine?
Hi, I'm Katie McGonigal. I live at ninety-five Benedict Terrace in Long Meadow. I've lived here for almost six years. I'm currently on the Cultural Council and I've just finished my first three-year term and would like to continue on. It's been, uh, an exciting and interesting process to be involved and to be on, uh, the Cultural Council. And it's nice to be able to bring arts to our community and I would like to continue to be able to help with that process.
Okay. Is there anything that you were involved with the Cultural Council that you were really excited about that you want to share with us? Katie?
Um, sure. Um, we have really great discussions and do research on the different applicants that are applying to receive funding through the Long Meadow Cultural Council. So just doing some research on that and learning about what they're looking to bring to the community and some of the uh, programs and performances and events that have come, um, have, have been a worthwhile experience.
Great, great. Uh, any questions from board members? Okay, you're done. Uh, well, thank you for stepping forward and we'll let you know in July. All right?
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And, um, we also have the Historic District Commission, um, Sarah Grzadzek and Amy Clark. Would they? Come on, uh, are you Sarah? Hello, Sarah?
Hello, sorry, I have a little, uh, person with me right now for a couple of seconds.
Okay, well, uh, we'll, we'll start with you. If you could just give us your, your name and address and your interest in the, in the Historic District Commission.
Sure, my name is Sarah Grzadzek Fernandez. I live at three zero two Williams Street here in Long Meadow. I'm, and we moved here about eight years ago. I'm, I have been interested in history, I'm as a hobby of mine for a very long time. I'm including, uh, interior design, I'm, and I've. design. I am, and I figured this would be a great, uh, way to give back to the town and a hobby that does not have to do with my job.
Okay, great. Ed Hand, would you want to tell us your name, address and your interest in the community?
Sure. Um, my name's Amy Clark and I live at sixty four Nevens Avenue. I have almost lived in Long Meadow for two whole years. So, but I've, um, grew up in Pennsylvania and have been in Massachusetts for about fifteen years now. Um, I applied for the historical district commission, um, as well as the historic.
Historic commission.
Thank you. Um, I enjoy history and I'm looking for a way to serve and give back to the community and I'd be happy to do that on either committee, obviously.
Great, thank you. Uh, comments, questions?
Yeah, any, you were even Sarah, do either of you live in the historic district at the time? So your house is in part of the historic district? Sarah, do you live in the historic?
I wish I lived in the historic district, but I do not.
Oh, so the historic district commission has required members that, you know, architects and designers and things like that. Have either of you investigated those categories and determined whether you fit into those? I believe we need to, Mike, maybe we call to you to see how we're doing relative to filling the category of the historic district because I, you know, and, and I'm not concluding anybody right now, but the issue may be that if the district, if the commission can have twelve people and we have openings and we need an architect or a, you know, zoning person or something like that, we may not have, have room for everybody.
There were a few, uh, resignations, resignations with people that did not apply for reappointment. So it kind of is fluctuating at the moment. So, um, we need, we need to gather that information and have it ready.
Yeah, so just, just kind of as going forward, just to realize that as part of the approval process, we need to, for the historic district commission, almost exclusively fit people's skills, capabilities and or training with, with certain openings and that's why stay logged. Just, just thought I'd mention that. Okay, thank you for that.
Okay, yes, true. Amy, do you have a preference for a commissioner you are, you're seeking to serve on both and you're aware of the difference?
I'm aware of the difference. I'd be interested in serving on either. And it sounds like Sarah is, I think she mentioned design. She also lives closer to the historical district. I am an attorney, but no one ever needs another attorney. So.
You'd be surprised. I think there's, they do need attorneys.
Not in Massachusetts, I'm sure.
Any little questions or comments? Well, Amy, I, it's a great way to get the talent within her two years. That's great. You just jump right in. Appreciate you coming, stepping forward. Um, so we will let, we'll be the whole Sarah in a couple of weeks, July, we'll make the decision, right? Thank you for coming tonight.
Um, I, I think we're like, gonna let people know in September.
Oh, in September?
Yeah.
Oh, very good. You had mentioned. We're interviewing.
August, or August, yeah.
So you, you have to sit with pins and needles to learn this. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And Parks and Recs Commission, um, Jeffrey Lintal.
Gerald was here and then he left.
There was a reappointment. Well, he's, oh, Gerald, yes, he's.
I think it's, that's not a phone call or something.
Yeah, he's got a phone call. Oh, Eric Conings. And, and Gerald Duquette, you're thirty seconds behind and you have to wait till next year. I was thinking, but maybe we'll. So, uh, if we can start with Jeffrey, um, and your, your name and address and your interest in the Parks and Recs Commission, then we'll follow it. Sure.
Sure. Jeff Rintool, twenty seven Cranwell Lane, Long Meadow here. Uh, this will be my third term going into there. Um, I've also, I also represented Park and Rec on the CPC committee. Um, my interest is continuing some of the projects, the big projects that have occurred, uh, within the Park and Rec slash CPC, specifically the tennis courts, West Park Fields, um, excuse, Wolf's Field, Wolf's Field, thank you. Um, and, uh, you know, just the improvements that we've started to make and continue to make throughout our, our parks and in, in the, in the different fields. Um, you know, we have in this town a phenomenal sports program and what I've seen is it's almost incredible what we could do with some of the fields that these younger athletes come from. So we're really excited to see kind of some of the facilities getting better and better. Um, hopefully that'll continue to promote that. Not only that, we have some great, you know, sports is an interesting thing. We have some great, um, parks. Uh, I live right next to sort of Turner Park, going there quite a bit with, uh, the dogs and, uh, just really enjoy the, uh, the atmosphere as well as kayak in there and seeing the turtle that's about the size of this table in there. So it's a pretty big boy.
Okay, thanks. And Mr. Duquette?
How are you? Gerald Duquette, sixty nine Clermont. Uh, I've been in town since, um, two thousand and four. I have four kids and I've coached them all in various sports. I've been, um, involved in, uh, I've coached soccer, football, baseball, softball, basketball. Um, we have made maximum use that my family has of Parks and Recs and, uh, so it's, it's the most relevant committee in town to my family's, uh, activities and I've enjoyed it a great deal. I've only been on it for two years. I, I finished a term, a three year term apparently. Uh, my, the, the other commissioners and, and the director work very well together. I'm having a very fine time and happy to continue.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Yes.
Just have questions for both you. Jeff, I just want to make a correction. Turner's not a park. We treat it like a park. It's ball fields, but it's Turner, not park. It's not, for what it's worth, legally, it's not a park, but.
No, it sure looks like it, but thanks.
I know it's under the, you know, Parks and Rec run the fields and stuff like that. But if you look on the town coffers, it's not a park. Anyway, but side point, one of the, one of the issues we have is a shortage of fields. And I say that because we could have all the fields we want to. And, and so I'd just like each of you to just talk about the issue of seasonality of sports teams and, and fields and how you'd handle the issue of, you know, lacrosse wants to play in the fall and baseball wants to play in the fall. But soccer says you're a spring sport. We want the fields for soccer. How do you deal with that? Jeff, you're the person then, Jeff?
So, uh, that's actually come up and it's, uh, was this year and honestly, um, you know, I think Barry's done a great job in kind of bifurcating both the, um, you know, kind of helping to, to give everyone an opportunity, but knowing, you know, and soccer will tell you that they're all year round. And I think you, you'll hear that, um, you know, kind of the lacrosse is more of a spring sport, but I do think that, you know, they try to make it, uh, as, um, you know, unified as they can. I know that, you know, as you get, as we get older, um, the kids get older, you know, the lacrosse, I mean, just thinking about my son's class, there was four kids that went on, um, D one lacrosse, um, uh, you know, and several that did soccer at, uh, D one schools. So just thinking about, you know, trying to be as, as equitable and fair as you can while still trying to, to keep the fields open and, you know, viable. Um, one of the biggest challenges is we don't have enough fields, so no field gets to rest. And unfortunately, that's a big, you know, that's going to dig in and, um, you know, at some point, we've got to be able to figure out how to, how to rest them and make them so that they can be pristine as they are the day they restarted using them.
Yeah, so the issue has been discussed a lot and the idea of whether we look at it as a, uh, each sport, each has its season and use that as the default or, uh, the other, the, on the opposite end of it was the notion and the soccer association felt that it should be more about number of participants. And so we were sort of talking about seasonality versus, uh, number of participants, uh, and the, um, the director, Barry Jarvis, actually brokered an arrangement that seems to have worked out well. So that's great. Uh, the on the question though of number of participants versus seasonality, I'm not sure, we haven't had a vote on it. Uh, but I personally am a, an advocate of season, of the seasonality approach, right? I, I think there are fall sports and there are winter sports and there are spring sports and, and I think we can have that sort of default seasonality without, uh, leaving anybody out. In other words, just because we, we decide to use seasonality instead of participants, and I could give you some reasons why I think that's a better idea, that doesn't mean that the soccer just doesn't get a field in the spring. And, and obvious, it just, it's a, it's a nice rule. I would like it to be sort of a, a baseline rule, not the end of the discussion, however, right? The idea would be, okay, we're not just going to say you're soccer and it's spring, you don't get a field. We're going to take a hard look at the actual schedules. We're going to talk about away games versus home games. We're going to get lacrosse, this is what I would advocate. We're going to get lacrosse and soccer to sit down together with their schedules and come up with, you know, an arrangement that they can work with. And I think they can, and I think they basically are. So it, it, it's been a controversy, but I don't think it's, uh, one that is that doctor's all.
Yeah, uh, yes, Marcus question I, I was thinking was I, I was right in the middle of all, uh, the discussion. I think there was an agreement, didn't make anybody happy, which was a good agreement.
Right.
Um, but I, what you're saying, Gerald, is what I, you know, we don't get to talk to everyone too often.
Right.
I, I think it's important to have a metric that you can point to and say, I'm not, this isn't personal.
Right.
Look at this. And I, and I think last, this spring, uh, we were lucky enough to have Wolf's Field open. Everyone wanted it.
Right.
We need to have something that you will, and Barry can say, no, here's why.
Right.
And I think that would make, again, no one's ever going to be happy.
Right.
Um, but at least it's fair.
And I think seasonality has a lot going for it in that regard because it's steady, it's predictable, it's clear, you don't get into a numbers fight. It's, it's a nice default and it, it allows for, uh, whatever arrangement is made to be made in a, in a sort of an amicable, um, uh, way because you're going, you're saying this is the default. However, let's sit down and let's talk about how we can help everybody get with it.
I'm not necessarily advocating or agreeing with you on the seasonality. I, I don't know, but I know we have these numbers coming in.
Right.
That I, those also have to be taken into account, the, the survey. So I, I hope that, um, I, I think you've got, you've got some big decisions, uh, come up. So, but I, I'm glad we have people who are willing to do it.
One of the challenges with the numbers too is kids are over programmed. They're playing lacrosse and soccer.
Yes.
And it's like, wait a minute.
Kids play three sports this spring.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's, I mean, I, you know, that's a challenge we have in trying to kind of make it as equitable as we can because that, I brought my kid in cleats, the hockey ring.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank, thank you very much. And now we have some candidates for tree committee, Dave Marinelli, Mark Toski, the woman, the woman of CPA.
So I know that Dave and Mark are, I know that Mark actually, you know, late today that he's not going to be receiving a new term and Dave wasn't available tonight. I think I want to see this receipt bill in here right now. And I don't believe this court is here either. So, uh, if they're still interested, we can look for a schedule. I believe that's going to be approved.
Okay. And then there's only one of the P S, James Turtlemann.
So he's not, my says I'm here. He's not here, Sam.
He's not here. Okay. All right. So, um, that's it for, um, interviews for today. So we'll move on to, we have a presentation guest speaker, Davy Tree Hazard Tree Assessment Presentation. Mariah Day is our speaker, right?
Yes.
Hey, well, Mariah, thank you for coming to the select board in Long Meadow and, um, why don't you present your, your information on tree hazard, on hazard tree assessment?
All right.
You should be able to share your screen.
Yes, just getting it set up here. All right. Uh, is my screen visible?
Yes, it is.
Excellent. Great. Um, all right. Thank you all so much for having me speak tonight at this meeting. Uh, my name is Mariah Day. I am a project manager with Davy Resource Group. We're an environmental consulting company and I personally specialize in tree inventories, tree risk assessment and urban tree management. Whoops, come on. There we go. So, uh, I'm going to try to keep this really brief tonight, um, and go through quickly some background about why we do tree inventories and inventory updates, then talk about some of the, uh, results from the inventory that we conducted in Long Meadow back in two thousand and twenty with a particular focus on the maintenance needs and budgeting and then kind of leave off with, um, some thoughts about the next steps, uh, as far as managing the public trees in Long Meadow goes. So starting off with some background, um, the major reason that we conduct tree inventories is that it's very difficult to do any sort of systematic maintenance or management of your public trees if you don't know what you have and thereby what you need. Uh, so tree inventories give you that tool to know how many public trees you have, where they're located, what condition they're in and what their needs are. Another major reason that we do inventories and inventory updates is to help communities mitigate risk and reduce liability. So trees provide numerous benefits, uh, but they also have risk associated with them. And I think that we've all probably heard of at least one situation where a tree failed and struck a building or a car or even a person. And kind of having a sense of which trees near community are posing the greatest risk can help you determine what your priorities need to be in terms of maintenance and overall just manage the public trees in a way that brings the risk level they pose as low as is reasonably practicable. And of course, with all of this information, it's going to really help you plan ahead, figure out in advance what your budget needs are, what your staffing needs are, what you might need in terms of equipment or hiring for contractors. And all of that information, of course, is really, really valuable just in terms of being able to make these short and longer term plans. And finally, there's been a lot of talk in the last, uh, couple of decades about how trees really provide a lot of really important benefits in urban developed areas. And, uh, knowing kind of what you have, what condition those trees are in, and also what you might be missing can be really valuable in terms of figuring out how to take better care of your existing trees and how to strategically plant new trees in order to improve the benefits that trees are providing to the community. So this graphic here, uh, shows just an extraordinarily small number of the tree benefits that are provided. Um, but it, it does give some of them. Uh, for example, trees are a really important component of water cycling. So they help reduce storm water runoff by absorbing some of that water with their root systems. And that's going to reduce flooding, reduce the load on your sewage and water catchment infrastructure, as well as reduce the amount of pollutants that are getting washed off of surfaces and into your waterways and potentially your public water supply. They also control soil erosion. They can reduce, uh, noise pollution by up to fifty percent, uh, as well as, uh, remove air pollutants from the air as well. They take in carbon dioxide and store that in their tissues. So they're kind of helping mitigate some of the major drivers of climate change, um, as well as, uh, reducing heat island effects and generally providing a cooling, um, effect. And they provide oxygen for us to breathe. They're literally helping us breathe easier. All right. So getting now into some of the results of this inventory that we did, uh, this was actually an update of data that had been collected originally in two thousand and seventeen. And, um, we ended up updating nine thousand, three hundred and fifty-four sites during two thousand and twenty-two. There were, uh, almost a thousand trees actually that were removed between two thousand and seventeen and two thousand and twenty-two that are still within the old data set. We did not update those because they had already been marked as removed. So in total, ninety-seven percent of those sites, so about nine thousand and thirty, were trees. Um, two percent were trees that had been removed but hadn't been updated prior to the two thousand and twenty-two inventory and about one percent were trees that had been removed and there was a stump remaining that should get removed. So this map on the right hand side of the screen shows all of the sites that were a tree in two thousand and twenty-two as a green dot and anything that was a stump as a brown dot. And one of the first things we like to look at once we have all this information about the trees present in a community is to look at the species and genera diversity. And tree species and genera diversity in a public tree population is really important. Um, it helps, uh, sort of mitigate the risk posed by pests and diseases. So if you have a huge monoculture of just one species, that's a lot of potential host material for pests and diseases of that tree species. And unfortunately, we've seen what can happen when you have that type of monoculture, um, in a place like Worcester where Asian longhorn beetle came in and wiped out a huge amount of their, um, public street trees. And, you know, that's been really detrimental to that city and they're still recovering from it now all, uh, what, over a decade later. So in Long Meadow, we looked at the species breakdown and, uh, the sort of industry recommendation is that any individual species should not make up more than ten percent of the inventoried population. And we did find that Norway maple, uh, makes up about eighteen percent of the inventory trees and definitely exceeds that threshold. This is not uncommon. This is not uncommon. Most communities that we work in have an overabundance of Norway maples. They were very heavily planted in the early and mid 1900s in New England. And we're still seeing that legacy in our um communities today. When you look at the genus diversity, we want to see no more than 20% uh represented by any individual genus. And again, maples exceed that threshold with about 35% of the inventoried trees being um some sort of species of maple. So basically what that means is that uh pests and diseases that target maple trees are kind of gonna be the biggest concern for Long Meadow in the future as climate continues to change and pest and disease ranges shift. It also means that you may want to consider as you're doing planting plans, is there a way to incorporate other species and other genera into the public tree population as opposed to just planting lots and lots of red or sugar maples? So this uh figure shows some of the pest and disease susceptibility to pests that are of concern in Massachusetts currently. And about 68% of the inventoried trees in Long Meadow are susceptible to spotted lanternfly. 39% are susceptible to Asian longhorn beetle, 31% are susceptible to spongy moth, and 18% are susceptible to oak wilt. These top three, spotted lanternfly, ALB, and spongy moth, have a very wide host range, which is why you're seeing so many trees potentially able to be affected by them. Oak wilt has a narrower host range. It only affects oaks. It's also not currently present or not confirmed present in Massachusetts, but it is a pest of concern as it's um been confirmed in New York and has been moving northward in the past years. So basically what this means is that you just, again, want to diversify your urban forest if you, at all possible. And if you're going to do any sort of public education or outreach, these pests might be the ones that you want to educate the public on so that you kind of have that wider um scope. More people looking and trying to notice if these pests are present in Long Meadow. We did not notice them uh at the time of inventory, but it doesn't mean they couldn't become a problem in the future. We also looked at tree condition and for each tree rated it either good, fair, poor, or dead. And uh over 90% of the trees in Long Meadow were rated in fair or good condition. So that's really great to see. 9% were in poor condition. And these trees are not necessarily trees that need to be removed. They're not necessarily trees that pose a greater risk. They just are trees that are in kind of rougher shape and are likely to either need more investment in terms of pruning and maintenance in the future or potentially are going to be declining in the near future and may need to be removed. And there were only 32 dead trees present um within the inventoried population. So that's great. That means that Long Meadow on the whole is doing a really good job of keeping up with removing dead trees and keeping those from being present uh in the public tree population. We also kind of chart out the age structure of the trees. And we use the proxy of their size rather than actual age. Um, age of trees can be determined with field testing methods, but it's very time and labor intensive. So it's not really appropriate for an inventory of this scale. And there's again, an inventory recommendation or a um industry recommendation here which uh states that you want about 40% of your population to be young trees, about 30% to be established, 20% maturing, and 10% mature. So basically more young trees, fewer mature trees. And the reason for that is that there's very high mortality in young age classes of trees, particularly in urban environments. There's an extremely sad statistic that the average street tree lifespan is only seven to 12 years. So a lot of mortality in these young age classes means that you actually need to plant more trees than you expect to ever make it to that mature size. And of course, those mature trees are what are providing the greatest benefits. So uh in Long Meadow, we found that there's about twice as many mature trees as would be considered ideal. And there's a deficit of young trees. So what this probably means is a couple of things. First, there's going to be need to be more effort put into planting to bring the number of young trees up to that 40%. It also means that Long Meadow has an aging public tree canopy. You've got a lot of trees in that oldest mature age class that are likely to start declining in the near future and may need to receive um more investment in terms of pruning or potentially removal uh in order to make sure that they're not becoming a risk or an unacceptable risk on the streetscape. We also recorded a defect for each tree. This defect was the defect for which risk was assessed. And um in total, 37% of the inventoried trees had a noted defect of dead and dying branches. That's actually a great thing to learn because dead and dying branches is something that typically can be mitigated through some sort of maintenance. So that would either be removal if the tree is dead or mostly dead, or pruning if the tree just has a few dead branches that should get pruned out. So that's great because that means that about 40% of the public trees in Long Meadow, their condition could be improved and any risk associated with them could potentially be mitigated just by doing removals and pruning. We also found that about 13% of the inventoried trees had a tree architecture defect and another 15% had a branch attachment defect. So in total, about 28%. And those two types of defects are things that can actually usually be mitigated if you do structural pruning on the trees while they're still young. So structural pruning aims to remove uh multiple branches coming out at the same point, branches with weak branch attachments, uh, and solve some of these problems while the tree is still young and small. And there's a lot of benefits to doing that while the tree is young, including that you're making smaller pruning wounds, which are going to be easier for the tree to heal. Uh, it's a lot less labor and cost intensive because you're able to do the work from the ground with pretty simple hand tools. And you have a lot less woody debris generated, which then needs to be removed. So uh again, another pretty simple fix here that could solve another around 30% of the major defects within trees in Long Meadow in the future. All right. So going over some benefit stuff real quick before we get into maintenance. Uh, these benefits were generated using the iTree Eco software. And they actually only come up with estimates for a very, very small number of tree benefits. Really important to remember that uh these are not all the benefits that public trees in Long Meadow are providing. And there are many other trees in Long Meadow that we did not inventory located in forested areas and in private um lands. So the actual benefits provided by the entire urban forest in Long Meadow are significantly greater than we're going to be talking about here. But what iTree Eco does estimate is carbon storage. Uh, over 9,000 tons of carbon are stored by the inventoried trees. And that's worth about $1.5 million. And another 125 tons of carbon are sequestered or taken in by the trees and then stored each additional year. And that's worth about $21,270 each year. These same trees are mitigating about 2.6 million gallons of stormwater runoff. Again, that's happening every single year. And that's worth about $23,650 per year. And the trees are also removing 6,620 pounds of airborne pollutants and particulate matter worth about $16,460 each year. Now, the replacement value is a little bit of a different type of estimate. Um, replacement value basically just means what would the cost be to take every single tree in Long Meadow and replace it with another tree of similar size and species? So it's not a realistic value. You can't just take out a 20-inch oak tree and immediately replace it with another 20-inch oak tree. Uh, but this kind of gives an overall idea of the inherent and total value of the inventoried trees. And that was estimated at $29.5 million, which is very impressive and a number that you should hold on to because we will get to talking about budgets in just a moment. All right. So moving on to maintenance needs and uh talking quickly about risk assessment. Basically, when we're doing a risk assessment, we are asking three questions about each tree. The first question is how likely is the tree or part of the tree to fail within one year? The second question is how likely is that tree or tree part to strike a target such as a building, a person, or a vehicle? And the final question is if the tree fails and strikes the target, how severe are the consequences going to be? And from that assessment, we come up with a qualitative scale of risk that runs from low to moderate to high to extreme. And this scale can kind of just help uh folks who have to manage trees determine what trees need to be managed right away versus which ones can wait until time and budgets allow. And in Long Meadow, we found zero extreme risk trees. That's a great thing. It's also pretty normal. Um, we typically only see extreme risk trees after major storm events like uh hurricanes, windstorms, or tornadoes. We found two high-risk trees, 170 moderate-risk trees, and the vast majority of the inventoried trees were low-risk, 98%. We also assigned a maintenance need to each tree that was assessed. Um, in total, we felt that 473 trees should be removed either because they were declining in health and condition or perhaps because they had a defect that could not be fixed through any method other than removal. And that, those trees included those two high-risk trees that we identified, as well as 82 of the moderate-risk trees and another 389 low-risk trees. Uh, there were also 129 stumps that should be removed. The other 88 moderate-risk trees were recommended for priority pruning. And trees recommended for priority pruning typically had a defect that was at least two inches uh in diameter and was considered something that really should be dealt with uh kind of more, again, on a priority basis. And those two categories together are what we would call reactive maintenance. There's already an existing problem there and we need to respond to it. The next two categories, routine pruning and tree training, are what we would call proactive maintenance or preventative maintenance. So routine pruning basically seeks to assess and prune if needed every publicly managed tree within a certain number of years on, in a cyclical manner. Um, the ideal timeframe for this cycle is about five years. Uh, it can be extended up to 10 years, but beyond 10 years, tree condition has been shown to decline quite significantly. So we do not recommend going beyond a 10-year routine pruning cycle. And these 88 trees that are currently recommended for priority pruning, once they have been pruned and their immediate defects mitigated, would join the rest of the trees in that routine pruning cycle. We also identified about 1,500 trees that should be young tree trained. That's that structural pruning that I was talking about. And the young tree training cycle is actually only three years long because young trees grow at a more rapid rate than more mature trees. So you'd be looking at about 500 trees right now that should be assessed and pruned if needed each year as part of that young tree training cycle. And of course, over time, trees will graduate from young tree training into the routine pruning cycle. New young trees that are planted will enter the young tree training cycle. So the total numbers of trees in these cycles are going to fluctuate but from year to year. We did not really focus heavily on tree planting during this inventory. Um, we can inventory potential planting locations, but we did not uh during this particular inventory. And we kind of just came up with some scenarios for uh how to assess or to address tree planting in Long Meadow. Kind of the baseline goal that communities should aim for is no net loss. So for every tree removed, there should be one tree planted to replace it. Of course, while that will not lose you public trees over time, it also is not going to increase the public tree canopy and um is not going to likely to increase the benefits experienced by the public. So a lot of communities, particularly as we look ahead at changing climate, more extreme heat days, more extreme weather events, uh, a lot of communities are hoping to aim for more of a two-to-one ratio where two trees are planted for every tree removed or even more. Um, this is a huge investment of time and funding, so it is a challenging goal to meet. Uh, and finally, just uh another plug for inventory updates. The inventory does go out of date basically as soon as you do it because every time tree condition changes. So for example, there's a windstorm and some branches break. Tree condition has now changed. Tree maintenance needs may have changed. And there's also been maintenance that's been being done since the end of this inventory. So uh unless someone from the town is actively keeping the inventory up to date every time that there are changes, it's going to fall out of date. And over time, uh, you'll just need to review and redo the inventory like we did this last year. So again, ideally, every five years is ideal for uh tree inventory updates, but seven years is okay. Five years is not uh possible. So getting now into the budgeting. We're looking at, uh, so for the report that we put together for Long Meadow, we looked at all of the maintenance that we had recommended and contractor pricing for those tasks out of 2022 and came up with a schedule that uh allowed all that work to be done over the next five years. And determined that the approximate cost of all of that work would be $4.8 million over the course of the next five years. So an average of about $967,000 per year. And unfortunately, with the way inflation has been uh likely to increase annually due to inflation. And uh the actual budget table in the report that we provided is much more in-depth and breaks things down quite a bit more. So if you are interested, um, you can get more details there. But I kind of summarized that information for this presentation into a few categories. And the first of it is priority maintenance. These are your high and moderate risk removals and pruning. Um, I I'm not certain because I'm not up to date on what work has been done since the end of the inventory, but I'm guessing that at least some of this work has already been done. Um, but anything that hasn't been done yet really should get done within the next year if at all possible and would cost a little bit less than $200,000 to complete. Next, there's routine removals. These are our low-risk tree removals and stump removals. Those can kind of be done as time and budgets allow, but again, for the purposes of this report, we put it all within a five-year timeframe. And that would cost about $600,000 to complete. Now proactive maintenance, that's our routine pruning and our tree training. Those are cyclical and should continue in perpetuity. Um, but over the next five years are estimated to cost two point, almost $2.2 million. So that is a, that's kind of your biggest expense category is those proactive cycles. But they do have a really beneficial uh effect on tree condition, tree health, and reducing instances of elevated risk in the community related to trees. And we have tree planting. For the purposes of this report, we assumed a two-to-one uh replacement-to-removal ratio to give an estimate of kind of what that type of program would cost. And that included replacement trees for trees that are recommended for removal, but also replacement trees for trees that are estimated to die just from natural mortality over those five years. And of course, there's that two-for-one ratio. So new planting is included in here as well. And that's the other very expensive category, estimated to cost $1.7 million over the the five-year plan. Uh, then we have inventory and inspections. These are our inventory updates as well as additional tree inspections. Sometimes uh we need to kind of do additional inspections to make a final determination on what to do with a particular tree. Uh, as well as just um it's good to do routine inspections of the trees. Tree risk can change pretty rapidly as well. Again, storms can come through and cause branch breakage. Trees can be injured and it just, all of that can change tree risk. So updating that more frequently is beneficial. And that's estimated to cost about $75,800 over five years. And then finally, Sean was able to give me some information about the clerical salaries for tree, uh, the tree care staff. And that is estimated to cost about $64,000 over the next five years. All right. So wrapping up now with kind of what's next. You have an updated inventory. You have this report and some sense of what a five-year maintenance schedule would look like. The next step really is to plan. So uh I'm an expert on uh urban trees, but you folks are the experts on Long Meadow and what is feasible for Long Meadow to accomplish. Uh, and also sort of the experts on how Long Meadow could accomplish this work. So that's kind of something that has to be dealt with internally uh as well as figuring out where the funding for this is going to come from. Um, a lot of work recently, so this inventory, I believe, was funded at least partially by a state grant. And there's been a lot of really great opportunities in the last few years from the state, from the federal government, and sometimes from private entities to um receive grant funding to do tree-related work, not just inventories, but actually some of this maintenance work as well. However, uh, grant funding is not super reliable. It's dependent on what the federal government, the state government has available to give away. And it's dependent on applications going in every year. So uh while it can be really beneficial to supplement a tree care program. So while it can be really beneficial to supplement a tree care program, it shouldn't be the basis for tree care funding. There has to be some dedicated funding in the municipal budget in order to make sure that this work is able to actually take place. So once there's a plan, once there's funding available, it's time to actually do the maintenance. And that could be through hiring contractors, through existing town staff, or through hiring and training new town staff and sort of developing that workforce. Kind of whatever combination of those makes the most sense for Long Meadow. All right, I'm going to wrap up there for this evening. Again, thank you so much. And I don't know if we have time for questions or not, but if anyone does have questions that aren't dealt with here, you can feel free to reach out to me. My email is here at the bottom of the slide. I'm always happy to answer questions.
Okay, thank you, Mariah. Do you have a question? Yes, I wouldn't call it Chris. But I just, a quick one. If we did plant a young tree, how small are those trees and how long are they until they reach a state of maturity where they become like shade trees?
Sure. So the standard planting size, sort of the industry recommendation, is two and a half, two to two and a half inch caliper at the time of planting. So they are quite small. We're talking something that might be six to eight feet tall when it goes in the ground. How long it takes that tree to reach maturity can vary pretty significantly depending on the species. Some grow much faster than others. The location, a tree in a place that's meeting all of its needs is going to grow much more rapidly than a tree in, say, like a very small tree pit in the sidewalk. And just kind of on, you know, how much maintenance is put into it. If you're able to get out and water it consistently for the first couple of years, that's really going to help the tree establish and get started. I would say in general, you're looking at probably at least 30 years, maybe more, to get to a tree that's sizable enough to really start ramping up those benefits. So there's a quote that's like, "The best time to plant a tree was 20 years ago. The second best time is today."
All right, thank you. Yes, well, so.
Yeah, Mariah, thank you. I have a couple of questions. You put together a budget for us on that does all the work. Was that based on being done by town employees, by outside contractors? How do you, you know, I mean, the dollar figure is dependent upon, you know, what, whatever basis you use. I mean, I assume you're Massachusetts-based, so you understand that we have to pay prevailing wages, we use outside contractors. So what's your basis for coming up with $4.8 million? I guess is my first question.
Sure. So this is contractor pricing. We reach out regularly to some of our contractor contacts and get their sort of average estimate on what it costs to do each of these tasks. It's also broken down by size, so it's not just a one price for every tree removal. It is a price for a, you know, five-inch tree versus a 20-inch tree versus a 30-inch tree. They cost different things. The actual costs to do this will, of course, vary depending on which specific contractor you get, whether, you know, how much of the work you're doing in-house versus through contractors. So it can vary quite a bit. This is kind of more for illustration purposes, and we provide the budget table as an Excel sheet so that you can make those alterations if you need to, when you realize, oh, maybe this is overestimating or underestimating what our actual costs are going to be.
I guess I was going to suggest this be a plus or minus, and I don't know if it's plus or minus 5% or 50%, but certainly can help us. The other concern I have are twofold. One is that the inventory you did, you know, doesn't take into account the fact that in October 2011, we had a traumatic storm go through here. We lost, I think, 1,200, 1,400 trees, most of which were not replaced. And so the inventory you have is already down over 1,000 trees from where Long Meadow was, you know, 10 or 15 years ago. And I guess the question is, how does that get reflected in what you've done? Because you're working on today's inventory and not what it should have been. And the other thing is, you know, you talk about doing this work. One of the things that Commonwealth requires is anytime you cut down a tree, you have to have a tree hearing. And we haven't had a tree hearing in two or three years that I know of. So where does that fit into this system that you're talking about?
Sure. So to address the first question, the trees that were removed after a storm in 2011, those would have been reflected in the 2017 inventory. So I don't know if Long Meadow had an inventory prior to 2017. And because those trees were removed and we're assessing what is there, they really aren't reflected in this inventory. That would be something that more of a planting plan or a planting strategy assessment might provide you with some guidance on where you have available space to plant trees. And then at that point, you see the numbers here, $1.7 million to plant 1,375 trees. I believe that's assuming around $550 per tree. I could be wrong because I don't have the budget table in front of me in all of its glory. But it's very, it's a big investment in time, effort, and of course, budget. So it's certainly something to work towards if that's a goal that Long Meadow has to replace those 1,000 trees that were lost back in 2011. And then, as I mentioned, there were about 1,000 trees that were removed between the 2017 inventory and the 2022 inventory. So there definitely has, seems to have been a trend of tree loss in Long Meadow without necessarily having enough planting to provide replacements. As to, sorry, could you remind me of what your second question was?
How do you deal with the requirement of hearings for, you know, trees, to take down trees?
Sure. Well, the one thing you can do is lump multiple trees into a single hearing. So I don't believe you have to do an individual hearing for every single individual tree. So if you have a, say, I don't know, a block area that you're looking to have a contractor come in and potentially do tree removals there, you can put together a tree hearing that addresses all of those trees at once. So that may be one way to kind of limit the number of meetings you're legally required to have in order to get this tree work done. But it is a component that is important to keep up with because it allows you to have that public engagement and the public, public education, really, an opportunity to explain why you are doing what you are doing.
Great, thank you, Mariah. Any other questions for the board members? All right, so I would, my original, or my first reaction to this is that it would be nice to look at what we already do from our DPW and see how close we are to meeting the goals and then look at where the gap is so that we could kind of move forward. The only other question I had was deciduous versus conifers, evergreens. It looks like there's a lot of discrimination against evergreens. Is there a reason for that, that they're so spewy of in most towns?
Yeah, so that's a really interesting note, and I like the way you phrased it because I'm personally a big fan of an evergreen. They do not provide as many benefits typically as a broadleaf tree because they aren't providing as big a canopy. So one of the reasons that big shade trees are so valuable is that they have huge leaf surface area, and that's going to increase the amount of air pollutants they can remove. It increases the amount of water that they're uptakeing. It increases the amount of shade that they're casting and therefore the amount of air cooling and surface cooling that they're doing. And conifers, because of their shape, don't really provide that same surface area benefit that you're getting from a broadleaf tree. There's definitely still a place in the urban forest for evergreens. They actually provide sort of different benefits. They can help really reduce wind speeds in the winter. So if you've got an area that's very windy, you're having a lot of heating costs as a result of that, having a screen of evergreens can be really valuable. So there's definitely places that they can be part of the urban forest, but if your goal is very benefits-focused, you're going to get more bang for your buck with a broadleaf shade tree.
Wouldn't there be a lot less trimming and risk involved in, you know, evergreens?
Not necessarily. You don't have usually the large branch failure, although if you think about, say, eastern white pine trees and some of the weird snow and ice storm situation we've been having the last couple of years, we are seeing a lot of major branch failure from trees like that. They also are prone to different types of stem rot, and they're all, they're soft woods. So they are much more likely to have stem breakage, so to fail at the stem. So you're less likely to have like the big branches break, but you're maybe more likely to see the whole tree fail in a really strong wind vet, particularly in the winter because there's less shielding for them, and they still have their full canopy out with snow, ice, weight, and then wind.
Okay, well, thank you, Mariah.
Will we get a copy of the PowerPoint presentation?
Sure, yeah, I can send this over to Sean. I've made a few edits since the original that I sent to him for approval. Yeah, I can just send it over after that, and then he'll have it.
Okay, well, thank you very much. We're going to move on. Have a good evening yourself.
Thank you, you as well.
And next, we will get resident comments. Do we have any resident comments?
Bennett, there is someone in the chat that I believe was here for the Conservation Commission interview, if you're aware of this. Share a call on what you want to do. Would you like me to move in? Would you like me to move in the person that was missed for Conservation Commission?
Yeah, I guess we can do that.
Hi, I'm actually here in the parking lot, if you want to let me in. If not, I can just stay on the call.
The door's supposed to be unlocked.
Yeah, the doors, oh, it's pretty.
Yeah, it was locked. It was locked.
Yeah, but why don't we just do it?
It's going to go with you.
Oh, they're going to let you.
Thank you.
I saw you turn it off. Get a complaint about it.
Hi. It's a beautiful, they're like, door locking.
All right, sorry about that. Thank you.
My apologies, you're busy in earlier, I'm going to try and slow down.
Well, David, you're actually doing us a favor.
Okay.
Because this is an open meeting, and people, the doors should not be locked.
Oh, all right. That's a good point.
This is our first time in this location because there's a heat exchanger problem in the high school. So it's good to know that those doors were locked and they need to be cut off.
Yeah, we were here a couple of weeks ago, and they came around at like 8 o'clock, and they were like, you guys got to go. And we're like, well, we have the room. So I could see them closing the doors on the guys. But thank you for taking the time for extending this.
Well, I'm glad we did. So you're looking for reappointment to the Conservation Commission. If you could just give us your name and address and your interest in the commission.
Yeah, David Dumay, 76 Sheffield Avenue, Long Meadow. Been here almost 18 years now, and I've been on a commission. Jeez, if this isn't my, well, it's my 15th, so it's been up there. But so it's been, always been an interest for me. Growing up, my dad was a commissioner in the city of Springfield, kind of just got an interest for that and just being an outdoor person, what have you, involved with nature. Just appreciate the outdoors, and it's always something that I kind of gravitated to towards when I came to town, saw, you know, commission appointments, that type of thing, and noticed it. And I'll just say personally, it's been a rewarding experience over the years, seeing just being involved in community in this regard. And so I would just like to continue that effort at this point.
Great, thank you. Any questions, board? Okay, that's a good sign. Well, you're reappointed, so we already know you're going through this. But so.
Appointments in August.
Yeah, in August, in the fall, you'll hear from us.
Okay.
All right, but thank you for making the effort to get here.
Yeah, I apologize for being late, but sounds all good. But thank you.
Okay. So I got the sense there were no, no one online for resident comments. Town manager isn't here. I know it's select board comments, but she'd want to be here for that. I guess she could watch the tape. And they will have a nothing report. I guess we could do the select board comments, and we could just ask her to look at the tape if there's anything important. So why don't we move on to that? Select board comments, is there any comments? Yes, Jenny.
I just want to address the, I know this is going to be in Lynn's report a bit, but the playground incident with the acid, I'm just grateful to everyone in town who really, I think, stepped up and was, the response was pretty amazing. And Lynn watched the tape show here this, but she, I was really impressed with how she reacted right away and was marshaling a lot of parties. And then our first responders were there, and DPW did a lot of cleanup, and we brought in outside contractors, but it was really just a unified response to a really horrific event. And I'm grateful to the police who are continuing to investigate and know that they're taking some steps to prevent this from happening again, putting up the cameras. Lynn, I was just talking about the playground incident and how the town responded really well, and thank you for doing that and for your quick and decisive actions. But really, just everyone, our police department, DPW, just did a great job with that. And I hope we get some resolution, and I'm really sorry to have. And then on, last week, I went on the pipeline walk that LPAG put together, invited the climate chief, Melissa Hopper, and she came along with two of her employees from her group. And we went over, started on hazard bill, walked over to the LCC to where the transfer station proposed location is, and then drove down the proposed route, including went over to the school, and then met at the Bliss Street Transfer Station in Springfield where Jesse Letterman met with us to discuss the impact on Springfield. And there was probably 12 to 15 people, and it was, Melissa Hopper and her employees were really asked really interesting questions and were clearly concerned with everything that's happening and the post route and the effect on Long Meadow and Springfield. And I'm grateful to Harry Levine for inviting Melissa to meet with us and for Melissa and her staff to, for taking the time to come to our town and to address concerns. So that was a good event, and I'm really glad that we were able to do that.
Any other stuff, any comments, updates?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to take a moment, assertive agree, obviously, with everything that Josh articulated, and just show my appreciation for Josh's chair over the past year. I know we went through a lot of difficult, whether it's debates specifically with the pipeline, I really think you led this board and did a good job, and I just wanted to commend you for your work, so.
I understand.
And then, thought there was something else, but now again, I really appreciate, you know, all the work that you've done and look forward to continuing it, so. Thank you.
Okay, if that's it, we can move on to the town manager's report for June 26.
So leading off with Bliss Park, as you all know, it's reopened, the playground. We made a claim with the town's insurance company for the damage. The police investigation ongoing. We've also received a quote for running a cyber connection to both Bliss Park Playground area and Greenwood Park Playground area. We're working on finalizing some of those quotes to add. We're working on finalizing some of those quotes to add cameras in those locations. When we get to the ARCA discussion tonight, you'll see that that's how we look forward to funding those projects. Uh, the MSBA Middle School Statement of Interest uh at on the June twenty-first. On June twenty-first, the Board of the Mass School Building Authority uh voted to initiate or to invite the town of Long Meadow to um into partner with MSBA to conduct our feasibility study. This was the next step. So now the town will work with MSBA to work, move forward to secure an owner's project manager and design team. So I think we'll really start to pick up pace in the next couple of months. Uh, and to follow up from our conversation with the tree presentation, uh, we had applied, as you know, uh, for a D C R Urban and Community Forestry Challenge Grant. Really pleased to say that that grant was awarded and it was um for two areas. Finishing our tree inventory expansion in the amount of thirty-eight hundred dollars and um helping fund our tree warden position for thirty-six thousand twelve dollars. The tree warden position is discussed during the FY twenty-four budget process. Uh, this is to add a full-time position, well, of which uh ten hours a week would be devoted to conservation agent duties. The job description's been created, the position's been posted. And once we have a full-time tree warden slash conservation agent, that will be the first for our community. Um, Ellington line painting removal, the work has been completed. At the time that I wrote this report, the equipment had broken, so they were behind about um half a day's work. But that was finished on Thursday afternoon, Thursday morning, actually. So that work is done. Uh, another great grant award announcement, the Mass Gaming Commission Public Safety Grant. This was led by the Police Department, specifically Captain Mazafaro, who authored this grant application. It's to complete Phase Two work for the purchase and installation of traffic cameras and the associated fiber connections for Congress Street, uh totaling a hundred and ninety-two thousand four hundred dollars. It will provide cameras and speed alert radar message signs with data management. They're going to be installed at the four major intersections along Congress Street. The speed alert signs will be installed in high volume traffic areas. And the side, a side street camera detection system is going to be installed at the intersection along Meadow Street and Edgewood Avenue. Uh, this is going to assist with traffic exiting Edgewood, sorry, it's late. Um, and I know I'm rushing through this because I know we have a lot to do tonight. The elementary school playground replacements, the architect has now met with all the school councils and the principals. He's presented uh design changes for each location to those groups. A meeting with the school's director of special ed is scheduled, I believe that was held late last week. The architect uh made some comments that he was very impressed with the engagement throughout from all the people that he met with. And we were a very engaged and educated group that he was working with. Uh, discussions from those groups all included equity in play, self-esteem, and preserved dignity through inclusive play. We're now working on getting final quotes for surfacing and equipment. He's preparing installation documents and specs, so those can be put out to bid for the labor and site work installation. This is still on schedule for a spring install. But it will take this long. We do have to keep at this pace and under to keep at that, to keep meeting that schedule. And um, a late update that did not make it into my report for Thursday's publication is uh the announcement of a selection of a new deputy chief at the Fire Department. Uh, I'm pleased to announce that Captain John Rigby was promoted to deputy chief. He's replacing Deputy Chief McSade, who retired at the end of May. Uh, Deputy Chief Rigby has been with the town for twenty-five years. The last seven is captain and shift commander. Congratulations to John. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Um, any questions or comments from town members?
Now, Lynn, I I just want to make some comments about the DPW monthly report. Uh, I appreciate getting so many information because we've been asking for it. Sewer volume, the water volume, that's really been helpful. I'm not quite sure that, certainly I don't get anything out of the fuel report, I'm not sure why that was included if anybody else hears who in town was using fuel, but but more importantly, I I was having trouble understanding the the project timeline report and I'm just wondering if there's some way we can, I'd be glad to work with you and or Sean to see what we can do to make something more out of that, but it was, it really didn't give me much other than a bunch of squares telling me what the Gantt charts were the projects, and I'm not sure that that tells me whether they're on schedule or not on schedule or on time or whatever. So my my feedback is that the water and sewer updates are very, very useful to me at least. Fuel, not so much in the project report, uh, I think could use some beefing up. I don't know what other people move on.
So just to respond to that quickly, um, there does appear to be a page that was missing. I have it here, for whatever reason, it was not uploaded. It's a narrative.
I was looking for a key or something, I couldn't find it.
But it is a narrative that just gave you a an update on some of the active stuff that they have going. Um, in terms of the fuel report, I I had a note that you wanted that, you mentioned it at one of the meetings and it might have just been you were pointing out the types of stuff that used to be included. But if you don't want the fuel report, we don't have to.
I have those for it, I don't know if anyone else. But I mean, that's a real internal thing of which officer, the police or what.
Yeah, I mean, it does have a budgeting impact, but if you don't need it, that's fine.
But it's not, I mean, but it's not our budgeting impact so much as that's that's why I like the water and sewer, because when we budget water and sewer, it's nice to know what those volumes that actually are, so, which is why that's useful for me. But I don't, I I don't want to run what reports you do, but nobody else is using it.
The document that lists the project and the timelines, that's something they use internally at the department. I did not want them to have to recreate something and spend time on keeping two documents up. But if there's stuff you want added to that, that like a legend that would tell you.
We're like, what's red, what's?
Right, right. Um, then I can certainly talk to them about that.
I I can see the supporting narrative, I just. So I I was glad to see this, but I didn't wish it.
Yep.
Any other questions? Uh, it's like, Lynn, the um the lights that are going up at Congress Street, will those be used for any kind of enforcement?
Those are traffic cameras going on the intersections.
Okay, but would they give people tickets for those who are lively?
We um don't generally do that, but I will generate that.
Yeah, because that would be a policy issue. That would be the kind of thing the board would have to discuss. But um, yeah, I didn't think they would, but I just wanted to ask a question. And the other thing is, it was interesting to see the uh the first report from John Steedle and Brittany Kraus um in terms of folks who are monitoring, you know, different complaints that are that are coming through the town. And it looks like, I, well, there was the first time I ever seen a complaint on a business in town. And they were talking about too many cars, the cars, you know, not being
It's being run as a junkyard.
Customer, yeah, and and I've never seen one of those. So that might be a good thing. I don't know if some complained or, but I think we should hold businesses in town to a fairly high standard, so, uh, so it was good to see that. Uh, the other thing is, I wonder, are they gonna address any issues on the tree bill? Because it seems like, you know, there are several things that they addressed. And the tree bill is town property and is that something that they're gonna just you know, without a complaint, if they just see something on the, I mean, I think that's been standard in town anyways.
Yes, they are. They absolutely proactively will go out and when they're in their normal course of travels, if they see something, a sign, an errant sign on the tree belt, they will take it up.
Great, okay, good. So I I think residents just need to be aware of that. That, uh, you know, the tree belt is town property and you know, anything that happens on there, um, it doesn't necessarily need a complaint.
Let me just clarify that. If it's on what is tree belt, but does is perceived as someone's front yard. We all know those types of situations where it's, you know, you might not have a huge yard, like it's different than the Long Meadow Street pull-up. Where if that's tree belt, there's nobody around, they will take those signs. If it's in someone's front yard, they will generally educate, give them an opportunity to move the sign back to where it's legal.
Okay.
Before they just take it.
All right, great. So that's it for the town manager's report, the local department monthly reports. And um, we go to old, old business and we have minutes of the uh May fifteenth meeting. Can I have a mention to accept minutes?
All right, Tom, I would suggest we defer, we just got that this afternoon, right?
Okay.
Yeah, I knew we were looking at it.
Yeah. They look good to me. No, we'll just defer this next meeting. Thank you. Uh, we have an application for reconsideration of altering the premises, the one-way brewing. And um, they did send us some information and um are they available to speak? Oh, okay. And so we have um is it Mr. Durant who's gonna?
No, Jason, Jason.
Oh, yeah, Jason. See you. Good to meet you, yourself, Jason?
Hey, how you guys doing?
Quite good, thank you for um waiting basically. And so you're making an amendment to change um for alteration of premises and we you come before us earlier about doing some outside work, like a patio. And uh, I assume that's what you're here for.
That is correct. Yeah, so initially um, initially, we had put in an application for a patio on the side of the building. Um, after we got approval from the uh planning board and then from from the select board, we um uh, it was sent to the A B C C. Our space um isn't contiguous to that space. Uh, because of Frankie's Pizza, that that little spot in between there, we can't license that, so um, they that, when I spoke to the um inspector or the investigator, she um said that that wasn't a viable plan, but we could do one right in front of the building and she suggested that I modify the plan and and try to present that if that works for me. So did a little research on it, talked with um you know, uh, the owner of Frankie's and the landlord and the rest of the businesses in in the plaza. And um, everybody seemed okay with it. So um, that is what I've done. So I've modified my application and sent it to you guys.
Okay, that looks good. It it looks like that it won't interfere with the entry door, it'd just be a little bit to the side of it. So any questions from the board? Yes.
Uh, so Jason, you talked to me about this a while ago and I was uh excited about it and then I got nervous and now I'm excited about it again. Um, but I I had some questions on it.
Sure.
One, I was uh, is this uh, will you remove this in uh cold weather months?
Ab- absolutely, that that would be the plan. The plan would be to kind of run it as a a seasonal, um, depending on um, you know, when when it's warm enough to open, so let's just say loose guidelines, I would say somewhere around April fifteenth, we would think about opening it if it's nicer weather prior to that, may maybe um, maybe March fifteenth if if uh if weather allows would be the earliest. Um, and then we would probably close it somewhere, I would think around um, you know, Columbus Day weekend, that would be somewhere around our last, our last uh, you know, um week weekend of being out there. And then at that point, I think it would start to get too cold and we and we would probably shut it down for the season.
The reason I got nervous was on a safety standpoint, but uh, can you explain how that's being addressed? Uh, what what is the thing with the traffic barriers?
Yeah, so a- absolutely. So what what I've um what I've put in my proposal, if you go down to one of the 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 end pages, you'll see that there's two, there's a um like a cut sheet from an orange traffic barrier. And and what that is basically is they're they're gonna be lined up at the end of um the patio, so you figure these patio, the patio is gonna be two parking spaces wide. So um, and and to the end of the parking space, so they're not gonna go into the lane of travel. Uh, you know, it's just gonna stop at the end of the parking space. So what I what I plan on doing is aligning those the water-filled parking barriers and then covering them with like a, you know, like a nice box, so that way it looks nice, you know? It'll be like a wooden box, um, just just to dress it up.
And finally, I was, I think it was maybe April, I, it must have been the storm of the century, I was picking up pizza at Frankie's, the power was out.
Yeah.
And there was about six inches of of water in front of Frankie's.
Right.
Is the parking area being changed at all? Do you have drains there or is there, or was that just a freak occurrence?
I mean, that was just a freak occurrence. Um, and I, you know, since since then, we've spoke to the landlord about the catch basins that are on site. Um, and talked to them that, you know, I I that this is a pretty uh you know, ten-year storm type kind of situation, but I I think it's something they they should look at about possibly cleaning those catch basins to make sure that that doesn't happen again in the future.
And so you have landlords' permission to use those spots and that's no problem?
Yes, yep.
Marco?
Yeah, I, this this impacts the parking area. And so the question is, have you gone before the planning board with this alternative proposal? And more importantly, does the new number of parking spaces uh meet the the standards that for the number of square footage of the of retail space?
Yeah, and that's a great question, Mark. And um, so really, this doesn't change what we originally did, right? So originally, the initial plan that I put in, eh, that was approved by the planning board and had a parking uh you know, um, with in front of a engineer, parking engineer, removed two spaces that were on the side of the building. And then we created two new spaces. So we're not, we're just changing the location of the two spaces that we're moving. We're not changing the number. We're we're still gonna add those two spaces, um, like that was approved in the original plan. Um, so so none of that, none of those numbers are gonna change, so.
I would beg to differ, sir. I think that, and I'm not trying to be argumentative, but site and design is very specific and I believe this ought to go before the plan. I I don't know.
No, I know. No, it absolutely didn't go.
Your comment was, we've changed it, but it's equivalent. That was what you just said.
It did, he did go in front of the plan.
With this new plan?
Yes. And it was approved last month. Uh, what what I was trying to say, Mark, is that we we didn't change what we were originally planning to do within a sense of the number of parking spaces being uh taken away and added. All we did was change the location of it um in in the new plan. So yes, it did go in front of the planning board. They did review it. And and there's, you know, they didn't see it as an issue.
And my, one last question is, because I live in that neighborhood. Those parking spaces are currently angled parking spaces. And this shows as being straight, so I would assume that you're taking up three spots really, not two, or some some combination, I mean the the parking is angled there.
It is.
These aren't angled, so I'm I'm just trying to understand how this jives with what's actually going on there, because I, you know we on the select board will get the calls.
Yep. Understood. Um, yeah, we're gonna stay, you know, they are angled as they current are. We are going to um square up based on the lines that are there and and bring them out. Um, but they will not, they will be the same amount of spaces, they'll be the same size spaces that are currently there. So I I don't, I don't see it being an issue.
So the parking's being revised to be straight in parking now? Or in front of the, for that side of the building, which I believe is like the.
It is not. It is not. All the spaces are gonna stay angled the way they are. The the patio is gonna be modified to fit within those spaces.
All right, Jason, and and your diagram doesn't really show that.
Yeah, diagram doesn't show that. I I, you know, if you're gonna present something that we can take to the public, that you can take to the public. I can't understand how the planning board approves something that doesn't represent what you just said. Parking spaces are angled, either the the patio is gonna be angled, or you're gonna take up you know, one and three-quarter parking spaces, or you're gonna take up three parking spaces. three parking spaces. I don't know how it's going to work, but
Right.
the picture doesn't reflect.
Well, that's what I'm trying to, well, it does though, Mark, because ye- yes, yes, our patio is square, but the parking's going to remain angled. So from the, the, the point of the end of the one angled part, uh, parking spot on one side, straight out to the end is going to be the patio. So that spot will have more room. And at the, at the other end, it will be straight back and that spot will have more room. And then my area will be in between those.
It sounds logical and.
Tom, I, I, I understand it. I mean, I truly don't, don't understand it based on, and I'm an engineer, I get spatial designs.
Yeah.
You can't have two angled parking and say, we're going to straighten it out and not, I, I just don't understand it. And I, I wish you the best of luck, but I can't approve this based on, I don't understand it because I don't believe the picture describes, it depicts what it is you're going to do.
Well, I mean,
That's exactly right.
But, but Mark, I mean, every, every, every right triangle has a, has a flat side. So if you look at it from the, that, that angled is, is the, is the long leg of the triangle, it's going to come ninety, ninety degrees back a- on both sides. So it's good.
Is this what you're doing?
Exactly. That's exactly it.
Yeah, and maybe Corinne can uh.
And I apologize, guys, that I'm not there in person to, to, you know, explain this a little better. Um, I'm actually out of town. Um, but this is the, the date.
Well, it looks like two sixty forty triangles.
It, it, a hundred percent correct, Tom. That's exactly what it is.
I was just going to jump in and say that um, the planning board was presented with a diagram that's not included in your packet, which, which is sort of like the site diagram as opposed to the renderings of what the patio would look like. So it's top-down, you know, looking at it from the sky kind of view. And uh, Josh, Josh's drawing just rendered my comments uh, pretty um, pretty redundant, but that's exa- exactly what we saw and why the planning board was comfortable with it. It's angled, taking up two spa- parking spaces. Unfortunately, it's not included in your packet, so you're not able to see what the planning board saw and approved. Um, but the planning board did discuss this.
But Corinne, if I could say, we ought to get what the planning board got if we're being asked to act on what they acted on. It's just my personal opinion.
I agree with you, yes.
On insufficient or different information.
Yes, Mike and I, this, I think this is a learning opportunity for Mike and I, and we'll, we will work to make sure that um, you have that in the future.
Okay, and thank you for being here to um, explain that.
Yeah, thank you, Corinne.
So we, any other questions?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Jason, thanks for coming tonight. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Just a quick, so I, I, I don't want to assume, but you, you've spoken with both neighbors, um, these brothers as well as Frankie's, and they're in support?
I have, uh, Dan, and I'm not sure if it's part of your, your package, but I do have um, letters of support from both of them. Signed documents, oh, as, as well as my landlord, um, stating that they're okay, he's okay with it as well.
This, that was a requirement of the planning board site and design review that we see letters of support from all of the businesses in that plaza in addition to the landlord. Um, given that this uh, parking, um, the patio is front and center in the parking lot. Um, so, so again, uh, as Jason said, that was something the planning board also reviewed and we did see those letters of support.
Mike, do you have the lease letter in your packet? Or the la- uh, letter from landlord authorization?
I mean, as part of the A B C C, I have the A B C C application.
Right.
And, and then the original authorization from the original plan, not the updated one.
Any other questions or comments? Yes.
Yeah, uh, I don't have a question, but Jason, I just want to say, uh, you know, I'm glad you didn't give up on this idea of providing outdoor seating. I think that's something that people in town are dying for, more of these options. And so I'm glad you're going to provide it and I think it's going to do really well. So thanks for, thanks for bringing out a different way to do it.
Well, a- a- and thank you. And I will say that, you know, I almost did give up on it. It almost seemed like it wasn't something that was going to be possible and um, a lot of the customers have, have requested that, you know, we, we keep, keep trying to ma- to make it happen because they're looking forward to the space.
All right, and, oh, yes.
Thank you. I just, I, I also wanted to add, I certainly agree with the need, um, uh, but I just want to say, Jason, you and your business, I mean, I've been there before, um, you, you work with other businesses in Long Meadow and um, these are the type of businesses that we should be supportive. Um, so thank you for, uh, all you do for the community.
Thank you, yep.
And Jason, I, I have to admit, being there recently and you had some live music, which I think is great for the town. Um, do you have any plans to have live music outdoors and if, you know, would that create some problems with the neighbors and everything?
Um, we don't at this time, Tom. Like, that's not in the plan. Um, we, we, we very restricted on the, on the nights that we do live music, just by us, we restrict ourselves. Um, you know, we always want to be a part of the fabric of the neighborhood and not, and not be something that's out of place. So eh, for us, um, we don't, we don't have any plans to do any large live music out there. If we ever did some kind of event like that, then, then we would absolutely have conversations with all of our neighbors to make sure that everybody was okay with it.
Okay, great. Yeah, and, and one last, I like your background with all the hops.
Thank you.
I, I have hops growing in my yard, so I reckon, all of a sudden, I'm like, wait a second.
Nice.
Oh, so we have a um, an amendment to change or alter the premises uh, for the um, for this business and do we have a motion?
I'll move that we accept uh, the amend, approve the amendment for the change of alteration premises for uh, no malt extract. I'll see, your business is one way brewing.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? All right, well, thanks for explaining this, uh, and, you know, I, I hopefully won't, you won't have to go through this again for long.
Well, thank you, guys. I appreciate you um, hearing what I have to say and, and giving me the opportunity to move this to the next step. Um, we look forward to uh, hopefully getting it approved and, and um, giving people an opportunity to sit outside and, and, and enjoy our product. As well as pizza from next door or Chinese food from, from next door. I think those businesses are also going to benefit from this.
Great, thank you. Good night.
Thank you, guys.
Our next item is uh, the legal counsel. We had previously discussed this.
Uh, and so I'm recused. I should have left them before. I'm going to leave them on that.
Okay.
I'm going to go for it, Josh.
Yeah, I'll be right out.
Don't, don't go for it.
I'll be right out, so.
All right, we'll let you know. Make sure the doors open. So, and, you know, last time we left this because we uh, weren't quite sure. Was there any additional information? Did anybody offer lower prices or?
Yes, so I did, I did have a conversation with Dordi Wallace, uh, and they got back to me and said they would be happy to resume office hours. Something apparently they did do pre-COVID, um, and pre-me coming here. So it was not something I was aware of and departments didn't have recollection of it either. Um, so they would be happy to resume that at no cost to the town for one to two hours per month. And they made a reduction in their hourly fee from the original two hundred and fifty to two hundred dollars per hour. Uh, but no change in paralegal or support staff rates. But they did uh, put a, you know, note there that they very rarely use paralegals or support staff.
Okay, so eh, eh, you know, so that's an interesting development, you know, could we, we've never really asked them to look at their rates in the past. Uh, because they've reached to this point and um, so was, you know, so that was good to, to respond to. I don't know if the board has any, books have any other comments that are different than the last ones we made or?
I, I just want to reiterate.
Well, if you're going to reiterate, we've already had the comments. So, you know, I, I don't know. I mean, hey, I'm looking for new comments. Beneath, last time you didn't say anything. I don't know if you have something?
Oh, no, I didn't. I think it, yeah, it, yeah, I did.
Oh, you did, okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Are you going to say the same stuff?
No, no, no. I, I was going to say that I think, you know, one thing that we didn't, uh, I, I don't remember coming up in our discussion last time, was the conflict of interest that occurs from time to time with Dordi Wallace. Um, like, you know, for example, that just happened with our town meeting. Um, they are, uh, you know, they represent a lot of different entities and folks around our area. So this has happened, I think, um, I think, you know, at least once a year, the last, you know, two, three years. So, um, you know, that is also something that, you know, that was kind of a difficult spot we were in before a town meeting. We were scrambling to find uh, you know, different legal counsel. Um, and so, you know, that's, I think, one benefit, another benefit of going with MEED is that that is less likely to happen. Um, and so, well, that was a point that I don't think was brought up last time, um, that, that I wanted to make. Um, yeah, I'm,
I like, I do, would like to say something. I don't think, I, my, my experience, and I don't believe that Dordi Wallace has the breadth we need to serve our needs in a timely manner. And we've got several instances where things are being held up because of their limited amount of staff devoted to municipal law services. And it's slowing down our progress on a number of items. And, you know, if we want to go into them, I'll be glad to go into them. Then we'd probably rather not go into those, but, but to me, that's very important. Because when we say, why isn't this being done? Why isn't that being done? It's at the lawyers, it's at the lawyers, it's at the lawyers. They have one person working on the town of Long Meadow and it just takes too long to get things done. We can't afford to wait for them, to my opinion.
All right. The only new comments I have is, uh, you know, I guess one is I'm glad to hear that the financial arrangement will be different, that they lowered their prices, uh, Dordi Wallace. Those were nerdy. So that's good news. And then the other thing is, like in town, we had a most, some people, most people who've been here, remember we had a hardware store in town, right next to Big Y. And that hardware store was very convenient. It moved down to Connecticut in Enfield. Um, and that hardware store is now closing. And we know it's closing because of places like, when people are in these larger firms. And, and I don't see this as much different. I see that, you know, we look at a local entity of, of lawyers and um, you know, the, the motion or, you know, the, what could happen is we could replace it with a larger firm out of Boston. And um, you know, I just think it's a detriment to our own community. I don't know if you have this.
I just wanted to make sure, um, it was clear. If you saw that email, this would be a change, this two hundred dollars an hour would be a change from what we currently have, which is a uh, retainer. And then work outside of that retainer is billed at the hourly rate. This would go to a strict hourly rate bill.
Okay. Yes.
Thank you. And so one, so I've been spending a lot of time looking at this, um, you know, the past couple of weeks. Uh, one of the things that I've been trying to understand is the, the travel fees for uh, for MEED, right? So they're, they're based in Newburyport. Um, I know they have a couple of offices. Um, you know, one thing, Einstein's twenty twenty, I, I wish if they actually came here and presented in front of us. I was doing other research. They went in front of Wilberham Board of Selectmen. Um, they went uh, Yarmouth, Mass on the Cape. Um, I would have liked to have seen them actually show up here, um, and, and meet them and then talk to them. I think whatever direction the town decides to go under the select board, I, I don't think um, it's a bad decision either way. Uh, I certainly see a lot of benefits um, going with MEED. Um, but you know, on today's agenda, we're also going to be, later tonight, we're going to be talking about the letter that we received about uh, zoning as well. Uh, and if you ask anyone else in Newburyport, church, the, the church of um, the Scientist Church that's, that's um, right in Long Meadow, they don't know where that is. They don't, they don't know the background of, 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 of the vote that took place at town meeting. Um, the people at um, Dordi uh, Wallace, Pillsbury, Murphy, um, they're local. They understand our concerns a bit more. Um, and then the travel, like I said before, of the, of the legal team coming from Newburyport to Long Meadow. So that in itself is, is just a concern to me. And I think we need to, whatever direction we go, if we go with MEED, I think we need to lay that out there and say, are you charging us? Are you billing us to come to Long Meadow? Is, is that part of billable hours? Because I think in the third um, proposal that I saw, it looked like the first hour and a half was, was included. Um, we all know that it's more than an hour and a half to come to Long Meadow from Newburyport and back. So um, if the board decides to go with MEED, I think that we need to go back to them and, and say, look, we're, we're choosing, and I'm not suggesting that we are, but if you choose a new firm, then I think we need to talk to them and they need to work with us, um, as, as part of the um, negotiation. Because what I was most disappointed with, you know, over the past fifteen years on this board, we haven't gone back to Dordi Wallace, um, to say, reduce your rates. Let's have uh, town hall, or let's have office hours. I've only been on the board a year and I asked a simple request, um, to Lynn to go back to Dordi Wallace to see how we can save money. So I was disappointed that we haven't done that in the past, or it wasn't very often for sure. Uh, based on the comments and the material that I read. Um, so um, I guess in clo- in, in closing, I would just, I would just say that I don't think we can, I don't, eh, whatever direction this board decides to go, I think we will be okay. Um, however, if we do decide to go with MEED, I think that we need to iron out some of these questions. Um, and then we need to make sure come the end of the year that we look back at, at whether it's cost savings, um, and also the work that they, that, that they provided to us. Um, so this isn't something that you change all the time, counsel, that we've been working with for thirty years. So it's not a very easy decision for MEED personally. Um, I don't think it, it really should be. And, and I'm just finding out tonight some of the issues that Mark brought up. I, I candidly, I, I haven't heard some of this, so. Um, I'm not suggesting I have to go through all of them, but I really only know what's going on in the memo because we don't talk to each other, you know? This is my first year being on the board, so um, anyways, that, that's what I wanted to kind of just air out, so.
Uh, if I could just address a couple of those things. Um, when this went out to bid, I brought back that you had eight bid results. And at that point, that was the time to say how you wanted to handle the process. And at that point, you guys directed me to convene the department heads. We could have had all eight of those respondents in here. We could have interviewed all of them, but that is completely the way you had me to do that. Um, it's also possible we could do that right now. We could do a one-month extension or six-month resension, extension, or even just a year with Dordi Wallace. And go back out to bid again and do a different process. That's, that's all possible. Um, but there was never an ask for them to attend because we did a different group. We went a different group with that. Um, and then just to provide a little uh, history, the previous retainer agreement had been thirty-two thousand dollars a year. That had been for a very, very long time. Um, and after I got here, I want to say it might have been twenty-one, it could have been twenty, those years, those two years were. Um, they had, uh, Dordi Wallace had approached me and said, we cannot continue to provide a retainer for thirty-two thousand dollars a year. It's just, it's, we're not even coming close to cutting or making our costs, um, covering our costs. And so we had a conversation, I believe there was a select board member with their, me there, and he might have been there, I don't remember. Um, and they had asked for sixty-four thousand. So it was a fifty percent increase. And that came to the board for approval in June, May or June, it was that year, to do it, an annual payment every year. Um, and there was a conversation about the retainer increasing. And I think that's when the conversation started about going out for an RFP. And it took two years before we could do that. So it wasn't always the sixty-four thousand, it was thirty-two. So it was substantially less. And it's only gone up to this amount for the past two years.
And then would you, what connection is there between that and COVID? Because was there a lot more need for town council during COVID? We had to look at various issues.
I don't believe that had anything to do with COVID.
No. All right, so here we stand. Um, I don't know if we're ready for, to take a vote on this, or should we should? I don't know if we're ready for, to take a vote on this, or should we should get additional information about, you know, what's going on?
I, I believe unfortunately, that we need, the town needs legal representation. And our fiscal year starts July 1st, and this contract that we currently are in expires essentially the end of the week. And, I mean, it would be lovely to take a lot more time, but I think we need to vote. And frankly, I think there's a mechanism by which we can vote and make each decision. So I'd like to suggest that you conduct the proper votes.
All right, we'll take, we'll take a vote. Is, is there a motion with you?
I'll make, I'll make a motion to appoint me, Talon, as town council for fiscal year 2024 for the town of Long.
Okay, is there a second?
I second.
Any further discussion?
Well, I, I just still, yeah, I just wanted the, the big sticking point to me is, is the, some of the, the costs that aren't really showing, or they're not in the documentation. So as we look at me's plan, there's three options, if I recall. The third plan for travel, for example. There's, it, it doesn't show what the fee is. And that's, that's just concerning to me. I mean, I, I mean, do we know what that number is? And, and how often are they coming here to every single town meeting? Twice a year, they'll be here in person? Will they be here in person? Do we know?
You're asking me? I don't know. I mean, our assumption is that we have council at town meetings. But, you know, we do everything else by Zoom. I don't know that they'd be here forever, ever, beside that. But, you know, I assume they come to Western Massachusetts, and maybe if they have a critical mass of towns, they come back, come out here, you know, quarterly. I don't know. I don't have the answer. But certainly for town meetings, we, I mean, I think we need some.
Yes, they need, they literally need to be here. So I just want to make, I want to make sure.
But, but don't kid yourself. We're getting billed by Dordie Wallace for that time as well.
Oh, absolutely. But they're also driving, you know,
I, I get it.
Five minutes away, or.
I'm, I'm trying to separate out the, the cost, which is extensive and a lot for either case versus the services the town requires. And, and it's the services that I'm focusing on. And frankly, if we spend a few extra thousand dollars a year on legal services, but things are happening faster and more, more efficiently and more definitively, then it's money well spent, potentially. I mean, we're not making a lifetime marriage commitment to these folks. It's a one-year deal. And, and I think, my personal opinion, that it is worth making that, that effort and see how, and, and if they don't do it, you know, I'll be right on top saying it didn't work out. I mean, I, I hear you.
And you're making, no, you're making valid points. I'm just, these are things as I'm going through and looking at the different proposals that it just wasn't very clear to me.
That's why you get the big bucks.
But yeah, it's just my, my fear is that they're, that they're not going to show up to town meeting, they're not going to be here in person. And some of the complaints that we get from residents is, well, I wish I could take town meeting remotely and vote remotely. We know that you can't.
Well, if they don't, if they don't come show up to town meeting, they're not our town attorneys. I mean, that's not a, that's not an option, in my opinion. I mean, that's an obligation, our town meeting. We set the town meeting six months in advance, for crying out loud. You know, we expect somebody to be here. The problem we have right now is, is one person from Dordie Wallace. And, and, you know, me, Talon, it could be two or three people who will represent us and probably do a decent job. So I think it's more likely they'll be here. But that, that's me talking about, and not knowing them at all, them at all. I mean, all I can say, vote your conscience and let's see where the votes go, and take this to the next step.
I mean, I, I do not want to be the blocker here of council for the town of Long Meadow. That's, I'm trying to air out just some questions.
So let, so let me tell you where I am, okay? And is that, because I've done some research too. And we came out of this last meeting with two and two, and not going in. So, I looked up in the, in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, okay? There's something in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts called the rule of necessity, okay? And the rule of necessity says, and I can read it to you, but I'll paraphrase it rather, that says, if somebody recuses themselves and it's a tie, that person needs to be unrecused. That's essentially what it says. And that's why I told Josh, don't vote too far. If we voted here and we voted two to two, and, and I think personally, you got to vote for me, Talon, and then come up to two to two, and then vote for Dordie Wallace and come up two to two. We say we're deadlock, the town must have representation. You've got to do it. The rule of necessity can be invoked, invoked. In fact, it ought to be invoked. And that's when you bring in Josh. Now we have five people here and we take a vote. And if, if that's what, because if that's the way things are going to go, that's why I'm saying, we need to vote. The town can't be without legal representation. And tonight's is, you know, I mean, you can wait and wait and wait, but we, we've got the information we need. So if, if you, you know, all I'm saying is that if we don't, you know, if we can't work it out with the four of us, we'll work it out with the five of us, because that's what the law, oh, the law allows. So I don't want you to feel, gee, somebody's twisting your arm or beating you over the head here. They're not. We just happen to be in a situation where we've got four people on the board. But, you know, the, the law of necessity, or the rule of necessity, and that, and it's an interesting thing, because it actually says, it starts out by saying, it's, it's pretty interesting. The rule of necessity is not a law written and passed by the legislature. Rather, the rule of necessity was developed by judges who applied it in their court decisions. Okay, the rule of necessity may only be used as a last resort. Okay? And then it goes on to describe examples of, of when it can be used. This is one of them. And, and, and it's, actually, it says, an elected member of a town or board has a conflict of interest with respect to a matter before the board that involves, it says his own financial interest to the partner, an immediate family member of a business organization. You know, that member will be disqualified from acting the board on, on that matter. In some cases, especially when more than one member is disqualified, a board that cannot act because it does not have a forum or some other number, members required to take a, a valid affirmative vote. So it, it, it basically allows for that, okay? So we're not stuck. And I didn't want you to feel.
This was the homework that I was doing last night, actually. And I, and, and saw that there was a former board member on the select board that I think wrote a letter about, about something similar to this, and I'm not going to go through it verbatim, but so I mean, this is something that I've been thinking about a lot. And, 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 and Mark, you're making valid points, and I appreciate it. I mean, I, I'm just asking the question that, depending on where we go, that we need to make sure that we're, that we have answers from, whether it's me or whether it's Dordie.
You're duly elected official town. You get the answer, ask the question, and get the answer to your own satisfaction. But at some point, we got to vote. And that's all I'm, I'm saying. At some point, you know, you, you take everything under advisement, and you go out there on a limb and we vote. Because that's what we do. Because nothing's ever assured who we are.
One of the examples here, I mean, all the way to the very bottom, I'm like thinking, this, yes, you can do that. But then the last example says, five-member elected board has a meeting involving a matter in which the board is legally required to act, and all members are present. One member has a conflict and is unable to participate. The vote is a two-two tie. The rule of necessity may not be used to break the tie. In general, a tie vote defeats the issue being voted on and will maintain the status quo.
Except when.
The status quo expires.
The status quo expires. And so we cannot maintain the status quo. And that's the difference. I think that's where we want to spend money or do something and you just say, we're not doing it. A two-two tie always loses. It doesn't exist.
But the status quo, does that mean keeping the same?
No. Because you got to, because you have to, because, because the appointment expires.
You had the same council for 30 years.
But the appointment expires. Somebody's got to vote to appoint them. There's got to be a vote.
The last thing you should recall for a vote is, is that, you know, I, you know, I, again, it is an hour fifteen minutes to do your vote. So, you know, I just had to draw a couple of weeks.
How fast are you driving?
Yeah. So, well, they're not going to charge us two or fif- they're not going to charge us three hours each way. But the other thing is, you know, all the times I've been on a board, you know, there's never been an issue with town council, in my opinion, at town meeting and so forth. They haven't addressed it. If there are situations where there's a conflict of interest, I think we have a right to, to get a counsel from another lawyers. So, and I think that, you know, the institutional knowledge to me is, is a big deal, you know, they, just like being on a board. The more on a board, the more institutional knowledge you have, the quicker you come to make decisions and understand what's going on. And so that's, we'll just move on. I guess we'll call, so you've had a motion, and it's been seconded, and we can vote on that for the appointment of legal services to me, Talon, and Costa. Okay, so we have changed our legal council. We have the town manager's annual evaluation written here.
We get Josh back in here.
Oh, yeah. All right, so we, I assume we're going to they could discuss, or, you know, discuss the, our plans for a bonus for the town manager, right? On this item, I didn't put the agenda again.
Sorry?
This is about the, the bonus for the town manager?
Yes.
Okay. And so we had met in executive session and came up with a plan to give a a 5%.
You know, we need to do this in open session. The executive session was a discussion. But I'd like to make a motion in open session, because that's what's required by law.
Well, yes.
You want to do it, fine.
Discussing what we've come to. But you can make a motion. Please.
Based on the evaluation of, of, of the town manager that we determined, what we, I'd like to move, make a motion that we propose a two and a half percent annual salary increase for the, for our town manager, which is consistent with the guidelines for the rest of the town, town employees. In addition, we offer the town manager a bonus $7,500 payable cash and $5,000 bonus that's through a deferred compensation plan that will hopefully provide some tax benefits to the, to the town manager. Did I miss anything, Josh?
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Sure, Lynn.
Thank you. Thank you very much for.
All right. All those in favor? Okay, good answers. Congratulations, Lynn. Obviously, we feel you're doing a great job. Trench policy. We did get some more feedback on trench policy. I don't know if DPW is going to report on it. We got a great letter by Sean talking about the difference between OSHA standards and if we like town standards. Sean, you want to?
How's it going?
Executive summary of your letter?
Sure. So, I, I can't get into the specifics of OSHA safety too much, because they're pretty complicated, and there's quite a bit of literature on it. But essentially, it's just seen in the summary. We, we looked at, after being directed from the board, looked into updating the trench policies. And we had some discussions with our insurance company, Maya, about what it would look like if we were to have an alteration from OSHA standards. And they suggested that we did, but we, we did see some deficiencies in terms of training, which we have addressed in the last eight months or so. We also had some conversations with staff about what, what it would look like, you know, in terms of reporting on private contractors. It turns out the town does have an obligation to report OSHA violations of private contractors in town, which is something we hadn't been doing historically. But I, I do think they've given the updated safeties, training we've gotten, something we'd love to do. I, I also want to make sure you guys know that, that OSHA is present in town quite often, and that they've, I think they've fined three contractors in the last year. So I, I, I do know that this has been driven partly by an incident that occurred a few years ago. But it's something that's being taken very seriously right now by my staff and by OSHA. So the recommendation from, from, from DPW is to take no action, provided that there's continuous training of staff and that we, we make sure we're monitoring the private contractors with a keen eye and reporting any violations to OSHA.
Well done. So, to the board, can we move forward with a no action on this, or Mark?
Yeah. Sean, I'm, I'm fine with taking no action on it. My concern is that there's, there's two kinds of obligations for me as a select board member. One's a legal obligation to protect the town and protect, but the other's a moral obligation. Make sure people don't do something stupid and end up getting themselves hurt. And that was the intent of putting together something, is to address the moral obligation we have. Tell people that, you know, you may work in Wilberham where you dig the road, the dirt out, and it's like concrete. But when you work in Long Meadow, it's sand, and when it gets wet, it's going to collapse on you. And, you know, I don't have a problem with us saying we're going to take no action, but somehow that misses for me the point of informing and, and fulfilling that moral obligation. And to some degree, even if it's, you know, when we have a trench permit that we approve, and I know every time they dig up a road, whether it's the gas company or electric, you know, they come to the DPW to get a trench permit from you folks. Somebody should staple to it our policy on trenches. Doesn't have to be their policy, and we don't have to require it. But to say, oh, by the way, this is our policy, and you need to understand our policy, because the town of Long Meadow is all sand. And I, you know, I saw this two weeks ago when they dug up my street for a water main break. It's sand, that the whole thing was collapsing. They, they actually had trench control. You know, but the, the fact is, I'm concerned that if we just say, we're taking no action, I haven't met my moral obligation to make sure we've told people the, the particular hazards of the town of Long Meadow. And I'd like to ask that that be addressed.
Okay, so in terms of a safety issue, is there anything we can do in that area, Sean?
So, I, I, I understand where you're coming from, Mark, but I do think the OSHA regulations, which every single person that operates an excavator or gets entrenched is required to state those classes or anyone on a job site. The OSHA regulations take into consideration various types of sand, ledge, and all those sort of things. And they have specific requirements for boxes, for ladders, shoring. So I think that attaching the OSHA standards, which should be our standards, the universal standard that all my staff is trained under, and that's also what Maya gives us for training. So our insurance company gives us the OSHA training. I think if we obscure or can change or alter those, those standards, it's going to make it more difficult in terms of people understanding clearly what they're supposed to be doing. So I, I think the OSHA standards go far enough. I just think we need to make sure that our staff is trained, and we need to make sure the contractors are following those OSHA rules. And if we see them breaking them, we need to report them to OSHA, and we need to shut the job site down. So again, my staff knows that, and we will do our best to make sure if we see our contractor or another contractor breaking those rules, that they're reported. So I mean, that, that's, that's my position. I understand where you're coming from for sure, and it's, it's a good place. Don't get me wrong. I just think that anything we do separate than the standards can create the liability for the town, for one, but also difficulty in training.
And, well, Lynn?
You've got a job.
Josh?
Yeah, it's, I, I totally see what you're saying, Mark. What spoke to me is the, I don't want us to take on liability by undercutting or even saying the same things as OSHA, but if something goes wrong, I don't want it coming back on us that, well, there are these two standards, and we weren't sure what to follow. Or even that if we say, or there's sand, they should know that by OSHA training, which I don't understand, or I don't know. But I see what you're saying, but I, what spoke to me is the adding a liability on, is I don't want.
No, I don't, I'm not asking for added liability. I'm not asking for a second set of standards. I, I understand exactly what you wrote, wrote, Sean. I just believe that, you know, that the the unique nature of soil in Long Meadow ought to be communicated. That's all I'm, all I'm saying. And, and clearly, it, it wasn't several years ago, and that was, it ended up with somebody dying.
Okay. And so Lynn, do we have to rescind a vote on a trenching policy?
No, we never.
So we never approved it, so.
We referred it to the DPW for further review.
Okay, all right, so is there a general consensus that we should?
Not fine.
Have a second policy? Okay, then let's move on to the Hampton County Retirement Board.
Wait, 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 there's another issue. There's another policy, a trench.
Oh, the patch paving, yes. Yeah, that's another good recommendation that looking at if they will be willing, you know, if the page, if the, if the road's going to be paved within a certain period of time, within one year, then we would see if the contractor would pay the town for what it would have cost them to do an eight-foot section, right? Sean, do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, that's, that's correct. I think the big thing is it's a, it can be a major cost savings to the town. If we have to come back in and pave anyway in a year, we should definitely utilize that, that funding source to, number one, to get the, the paving job done less, but number two, to also to save some carbon so we're not having a contractor come in and put down all that asphalt only to rip it back up. It's just, it's sort of a waste. So I don't think this is a, a policy that is going to hit every project. Certainly, some of them are going to need that eight-foot trench, but if we know we're going to come back and pave in a year, I think it's a, a good thing to be able to, to then give us some cost savings.
Okay, and for folks listening at home, that doesn't mean we're going to leave open trenches. They're going to be filled in, but they just may not be paid as, as, you know, a four-foot section, eight-foot section. Yes, John?
Sean, I think this, this makes sense to me. Is this, two questions are, is this you approving, just as DPW, would it go to the director?
It would, it would be going to me to sign. If you guys could have anyone sign off it, if you wanted to, if you wanted to have the town manager sign off it, you can do that too. But I think generally it'd be an in-house discussion with engineering and me and Eversource or Comcast, whoever the contractor is. We have to negotiate the cost of the asphalt with the contractor and, and sign a co-op agreement.
Okay, I just think we should be specific on who can approve. And then we, so, and you have a, you now have a plan on what streets are going to be repaved. So there's no question which projects.
What's come up a couple times, and, and this is one of the reasons we need to be adaptive of our paving plan is we have a road right now on Farmington where we get a water main. We did not have anticipation of paving that road right away, but Eversource will be putting a new gas main in there this fall. When that happens, that road will be completely destroyed and we'll likely need to go back in there and pave it next year. If that happens, we should be utilizing Eversource's money to help cover the cost of that road project. And another road, I believe, I can't think of the name of it, Comcast and Eversource are doing the project. So they had a good road that's been destroyed by two, two utility companies. That's another time when we should be utilizing this sort of plan to get coverage to pave the whole road.
But I live on Farmington, is that the paving now, that's the thin paving, that's not the?
That's a patch, a leveling patch, and we're going to have, as I said, the gas company will be coming in doing a gas main there this fall. So that, I mean, nothing left of that road.
Thanks for the heads up. Mark, what?
Yeah, Sean, Sean, my, my concern is the one year. And, and because that becomes so fluid and, and variable and it, it becomes problematic when one year becomes two years. I'm going to give you an example. If I drive from my house south, I'm, I'm going to go down Maple Road, turn left on, on Long Meadow Street at Maple Road. Between Maple Road and the Enfield line, there's got to be 15 minimum cuts that, that Eversource made for gas lines that are all six to eight inches wide, they go boom, 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 and it's knocking out the suspension of the car. So there's a case where.
What was that, Mark? Sorry.
Where?
How long ago was that work done?
Work was done, I don't know, a couple of months ago.
So, so I just, 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 sorry to interrupt. So when those patches go down like that, those leveling patches, they need to be given a couple of months to settle before the final patch will come in. So it's, we're probably going to have them come in and do that full patch. I can talk to you tomorrow, I actually need to go to Eversource tomorrow, but anything that was done this year is going to get that patch that you acquire.
Yeah, it's not just my perception, I actually got somebody called me about it. But the issue is, ev- even when we look at Long Meadow Street, you know, sometimes we think, well, that's going to get done next year and then one year turns into two years to three years. I just ask that you, and, and I understand and agree that you need some leeway and it's stupid to patch things once and tear them up. But, you know, there's got to be some understanding that, you know, it's, at one point, enough is enough. I mean, we spend a lot of money on our roads and to get these things cut into six-inch repairs drives people nuts.
Right, so the, the agreement that we would enter into with, with, actually, Eversource requires the town, if we take their money to pave within a year. So that's something, not that we want them patrolling us, but it's something to consider that if we enter this agreement with a contractor, there is a year limit on it. We have to, we have to go forward.
Thank you.
Okay, so there is a recommendation in here, it doesn't say DPW director, but if someone wants to make that motion?
I move that we allow the DPW director to waive the trench repaving, add to paving requirements and circumstances for the road will be repaved within one year.
Okay, the second motion?
A second one.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, it's called for a vote. All those in favor? Good answers. Thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
Those are great letters. I was, thank you. And what do we have left here? Oh, the COLA, five percent COLA for the Hampton County Retirement Board. We received letters previously about this and do we have any questions on this or are we going to take a vote tonight? Yes, Jason.
Josh.
Josh.
So from what we've told, Lynn, I wanted to see if you have to confirm this. This has already been approved by enough towns in Hampton County? Or you scored us a letter that was not exactly clear to me. Do we, we should still vote or do we still need to vote? It says that they have to report our vote.
They have to, they have to, they need to know what our vote was to inform the state which towns voted to approve it.
Okay.
And this is going to be on their July 12th agenda.
Any other questions or votes for a motion?
I, I don't have any questions. I, I, get a motion, then we'll have a discussion.
Okay. Is there anyone who wants to make a motion? I approve that.
I move that we. I'm looking for the language here. I move that we approve the, increase the cost of living adjustment from fiscal year 2024, 2023? This is 2023. Propted five percent of the base amount specified.
Second.
Good, any further discussion? Yes.
So we received a bunch of letters from people that were, in my opinion, my opinion only, had a program from somebody somewhere to say, write a letter to your select board to ask them to approve it. We got it from former police officers, from fire chiefs, or this, whatever. And as people in the select board saw, I, I responded to each one. And I did not respond to everybody as they did because we're not allowed to. But it turns out that we got enough that I responded to beneath once and Josh once and Dan once. I think everybody got, got the gist of what I was saying. I will say that in each case, I got a response from somebody saying, thank you for your thoughtful consideration. I still disagree with you, but, but it, it was, but I, I do want to point out one thing that I think is important. And that is, and, and, and there's a lot here and I think you've seen it, but the, the state authorization to increase COLA for retirees is based on state pensions that only give pensions on the first $13,000 of, of earnings. And so the state was going from three percent, which on 13,000 is $390, to five percent, which is $650. Hampton County is already giving three percent on the first $18,000 of $540. So the, the, the state was trying to fill this gap and it was pretty meager, it was a $160 difference. But 80% of that was already being done by our local Hampton County Retirement Board. So the, the strong impetus to, you know, do the right thing, if you will, or, or give an additional COLA benefit to retirees was much less, you know, you know, you know, required or much less convincing for me for the Western Massachusetts folks through Hampton County because they were already getting almost all of what the state was trying to, was trying to clear. And I think it's important to do that. I also, as I indicated, don't believe that the Hampton County group has done a good job of managing it nor do they understand the process. For them to say, don't worry, this won't cost you another dime is, in anybody's knowledge of how, how pensions are set, not true. I mean, ultimately, if you're paying out more money, which becomes additive year after year after year, at some point, the assessment will go up. Now, what they said, well, we've already assessed you with the maximum up till 2035, so we won't make any adjustments until after that. But they will have to make adjustments after that, there's no doubt. And they'll say, well, maybe the, the stock market will go way up and we won't have to. Well, if the stock market went way up, they would have made, made lower adjustments. So ultimately, this does cost the town more money. And just personally, just the fact that they don't understand that paying higher benefits costs somebody more money drives me nuts. I'm going to vote against it, even though it's a shame for us to, you know, vote against something for, for the, our retirees. The fact is, they're going to get this pension, any pension increase anyway. But.
Okay. Any other comments or? Okay, yes.
Oh, no, thanks. Um, no, I appreciate Mark's comments. I definitely have the same sentiments when it comes to the Hampton County Retirement Board, for sure. I think it's, I, I guess, quite frankly, it's been shameful in terms of what they've gotten away with over the years. And I appreciate Mark's efforts, um, serving, attending those meetings and, and trying to hold them accountable. But I'm also in support of raising, or this COLA increase for teachers, for firefighters, for police. These are people that served our town several years, they've reached out to us. And with all of the cost of healthcare and inflation and everything else that's, that's going on today, I think a few extra dollars will help these people. For someone like myself who, you know, grew up in town here and got to hear from some of these teachers reaching out to me and, and police officers that helped me growing up. Personally, I, I think we owe it to them for the service they gave us to Long Meadow. And I fully support the increase. I, you know, disagree with some of Mark's comments, but again, with Hampton County Retirement Board, there needs to be something done there and unfortunately, it's, we're not going to be the ones to solve that overnight here, but that's my comment.
Okay, thank you, yes.
That's kind of generally my, my thought process along Dan, because it is a relatively modest increase. It will cost more in the long term, but the way prices have skyrocketed, I, I know it's not everyone is on a fixed income necessarily or will benefit from this, but some people are. And I, I would like to do what we can. And with this modest increase, I think that they deserve this adjustment. And not only was I kind of disturbed by some things we heard from the retirement board on not understanding saying there would be no, no additional cost to the town, just the general misunderstanding of the process. We were supposed to hear from a representative tonight, decided double booked, couldn't show up and invited us to meet separately, invite the other, other towns' meetings to hear. I just not happy with that at all, but I, I don't want to take that on our retirees. So I am thankful to vote for it.
Yeah, Justin, I feel similar to you, you know, I, one part of me really wants to vote in a way that would let the Hampton County Retirement Board know that I am not happy with the way they dealt with the situation. You know, with, with all the conflicts of interest came out and everything and overpaying people. But I don't want people who worked hard for the town to suffer, so I'm going to support the motion. Any other comments or questions? Okay, so we, do we have a motion?
Yep.
And seconded, and so all those in favor? Okay, opposed? All right. So now we are, it's the electrical, or no, the ARPA plan? I don't know if it's something that we need to, oh, there's just now two updates, right? Is that basically?
Yeah, and one I would like a vote on, the other one I would not like a vote on yet.
Okay.
Um, so I had told you, you know, as we moved through the process for the playground replacement, I, I had mentioned multiple times that if we were successful at town meeting, I would likely be coming back to you, asking you to reprogram the money for the center school windows that were earmarked in the ARPA plan to be used toward the playground replacements. So that's what I have here in front of you tonight. We can sign a contract as early as July 1st. We won't have a contract ready to sign, but I want at least my piece of it, which is to reprogram the ARPA funds to be done so that I don't hold anyone else up. We will likely be going out to bid hopefully by the end of July. We will potentially, if you wanted more time with this, I, we could deal with this at the July 17th meeting. It won't delay it, but that will be my ask. And then the other one here that I just highlighted at the very bottom, and I'm not necessarily ready for you to do even with this yet, is the fiber and cameras for the, for both parks. Initially, it was $20,000. Late tonight, I got a quote that topped it at 31, but this was because the firm was under a deadline to get us a quote and I, I think we can get a better number.
And that's including the $100,000 that's already set aside for the IT?
Yeah, so out of this $100,000, there would be $45,000 remaining if we offer as $20,000 for the fiber and camera.
Okay, so you've informed us, appreciate that. Is there anything you need us to do in regards to this project?
I mean, if you want to take a vote on the playgrounds, you can, otherwise we can put this on your July 17th agenda.
Yes, and so can you remind us what the center school window plan would, would mean?
Yeah, great question. We've been asking ourselves that because we initially were planning to bundle the roof project and the windows for an MSBA accelerated repair application. They paused that program for FY '23 because of the cost of construction projects going up so much. I have heard informally that it will restart for FY '24, but it's likely won't restart till sometime late fall, early winter. So our plan would be to get back on board with our architect to get those applications together and resubmit and, and submit.
Because I, I heard from someone that the playgrounds are taking the place of the school. And then said, well, no, they're, I'm sorry, the playgrounds taking, taking the place of the windows.
Yeah, not entirely true.
Sure.
Yeah, the, the, right, the, the windows are double the cost of what the three playgrounds cost.
So should we make an approval on the vote of the elementary school playground replacements tonight? And then hold off until we get a better, the idea of the numbers for the, for the paving?
Well, we're not, we're not specifying dollar amounts anyways, we're just specifying categories. I mean, you're not blocking any of these dollar amounts.
Yeah, the $600,000, yes.
Right.
We would, we then create a special line, an organ object code that the accounting office uses and that gets put onto the contract. You don't have to do this tonight, you can wait, but yes, you would be approving the $600,000 out of the 4.1 million ARPA allocation.
Okay, well, I don't know if people, we've already looked at it, we have a sense of it, is it something we can approve tonight or?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
So I move to reprogram the use of ARPA funds, the amount $600,000 for the elementary school playground replacements.
Second.
Okay, any, any further discussion on that motion? Okay, all those approved? Okay. And then, oh, sorry. And then do we want to just wait on the fiber and cameras? Do we have a definite price or? It was 35, right?
It was, originally, we had thought around 20, we could do it for, we had the fiber quotes. The camera quote I got tonight was astronomical, it, it is laughable.
Okay.
So as long as I kind of have a general consensus that you want me to continue going down this path, you think this is a good use of the ARPA funds, I'll do that and I'll bring you back something in July.
Yeah, I, I think so, we could use that one, so, yeah.
It's fiber rather than cell?
So, um, here would be a wireless connection because it's close enough proximity to the building where we have Wi-Fi. Bliss is not. It would be a fiber run from the high school.
Okay.
And that was 8900 dollars, which actually wasn't as bad as I thought it would be.
Like run up on poles or is it?
Yeah, poles.
Alright, so then let's look at that next, you know, next meeting, or, or, so, thanks for your work on that, Lynn. Um... Yeah, yes.
Thank you. Uh, Lynn, so these are two locations, while, while you're looking into it, could we, could we take a look at Greenwood as well in terms, I'm, I'm sorry, Woolswamp Fields as well?
So that one's a little more complicated because there is no fiber out there. And the run, the fiber run there is, is long that we would need to go either from Woolswamp School, um, or we were looking at tying in, we have a redundant line with East Long Meadow. So we were also looking at that. Um, yes, the goal is to get cameras out there.
There's no way to have like a cell reception? Like that's how my, my solar panel burner connects to the cell?
You can do that if you have, like, some of the EV chargers, the one at Woolswamp isn't this way, but, um, you can do a cell plan. We haven't done enough exploring. We're down a person in IT right now.
Sounds unknown to their, uh, accessories.
Yeah, that's true.
What's your say?
Okay, well, the good news is that all the years Woolswamp Fields, we've really never, I've never heard any incidents of. So that's the good news.
Never heard any.
Yeah, um...
But, but yeah, I think, I think especially again, wood, I mean, I think they're kind of demanding that cameras be put in these, you know, playgrounds, I think. So I think this is definitely, yeah, something to be prepared on, so, so we can all for that. And then obviously, Woolswamp is a whole, long-term thing, but also something we should...
When people start pulling up the trucks and rolling up the grass and driving away, that's when we're getting cameras. Okay, uh, we can move on to electric vehicle charging. We have an update on that?
Yes, this is just a general update. Uh, all four locations have been installed. We've on boarded with NLX, the company. Um, we are, um, in the process of, uh, obtaining a merchant processor so that you can pay for charging. Um, and my intention is to power these systems up while we continue to explore what the best plan is for the town, whether we continue to just manage these four locations that we have because we already have a maintenance agreement with, um, NLX that's already built into what we purchased, uh, or if we outsource the entire thing to another company. Had two conversations with firms, um, one who does not do this, but was willing to explore it with us if we bought all their other services, which was, um, an electrification plan to get us off of fossil fuel, general fossil fuel using vehicles. Um, and so I'm not quite ready to do that yet, embark on that yet. It is expensive. I mean, I just don't think we're, we're ready yet. We can't even get these chargers online. I don't know how we can plan the electric fire fleet. Um, and then the other company dealt with residential assistance to homeowners, and, but they did alert me to a potential demand charge rebate program that Eversource is allegedly rolling out in July. I reached out to them about that and I'm scheduled to meet with them tomorrow afternoon.
It'd be nice to hear that from Eversource.
It is.
So, Lynn, uh, as far as the charging, see, I had, I read, I had a lunch with a car when I was on vacation. And, uh, four, four charging stations, one of them worked great. But I ended up having to turn the car in because I couldn't get it charged. These all four will be the same company, or all of our charging stations do you own the same company, the same system?
Yep.
Because I think that's the better way to go.
We did that intentionally, yeah.
Yeah, because that way it'd be worse than one. If you figure out one, you can...
Oh, and I, I should also add, I put something out to the managers group asking if anyone had outsourced, done this. Um, and actually, I got a response back from the town of Sudbury. They have the same system we have in LX Juice Box Chargers, and they are an Eversource customer. I just got the name of their facilities director and I'm gonna try to speak with her this week to figure out how they have this set up.
Beautiful.
In the meantime, though, we have them. I do think we should power them up and let's see what happens.
We, two of them have to be powered, right? The grant.
Yes.
Sounds good. Good work, Lynn. Uh, and then the dog, there's nuisance complaint update?
Yeah, just a quick update on that. I have received no response back after the direction to reach back out to both parties and let them know, or inquire if the necessary steps were taken to resolve it internally or if it needs to come forward to a hearing. So, uh, from there, I guess we can book that closing on the process or invite you back in the next.
Okay, Josh. I, I, I just wonder if, coming back to what kind of since the first place, do we have to do something? Based on our bios, I mean, so this is almost like a failure of prosecution, but we have a great, but uh, I think we, maybe we just wanna run it by town council and make sure we know.
Yep. And I also plan to reach back out this week and give them a follow-up, you know, where, where do we stand on this and then at our meeting in July, hopefully, post that.
Alright, okay, thank you for your update. Um, and then new business. The zone change we filed for from Polvast and the property at 916 William Street. And we have a letter request, um, that's pretty standard. It goes to us and then we basically filed this to the planning board, I believe. Um, so, I, I know myself, Mr. Colacino on the fours, he's still here with us or? Right, the town, thank you.
And Jay Roberts.
Okay, these, are these folks gonna lose themselves at this point? Mr. Roberts, um, Mr. Colacino?
I'm here now.
Okay.
I guess I've been asked to be a panelist, so here I am.
Okay, so who's gonna start with this? Is it gonna be yourself or Mr. Colacino?
Well, I, I guess I can, I, I don't wanna speak for Frank, but...
Go ahead, Jeff.
I, I, I mean, we did this two years ago. I think this is, uh, just a, uh, a procedural process to begin, uh, the, the, what will eventually be, hopefully, and from our standpoint, a, uh, another presentation at the Fall Town Meeting. So I don't think the Select Board has discretion on this at this point. There are no votes approving or disproving. It's just a procedural matter uh, to get it to the Planning Board so the Planning Board can start its hearings.
Okay, and, uh, do you wanna say anything about the project? Um, because people on listening may not have seen, um, the letter, so...
Well, the, the letter doesn't really explain anything about the project other than to say that it would change the zone from, uh, residential to the same zone where the rest of the shopping center is zoned. Uh, I'll, I'll let Frank speak to the project itself once he, once he gets to his computer.
Okay, I'm, I'm on. Sorry.
It's alright, good evening and, uh, so yeah, it's pretty bare bones. It says, uh, we're gonna go from residence 1A to a business and, uh, you wanna, can you give us more information?
Yeah. It's basically, um, uh, in, in, in terms of, we, we, we haven't really, uh, uh, re-prepared the plan, but it's basically going to be a similar plan that we presented, um, a couple of years, well, a year and a half ago. So, uh, it's, um, once we get to the Planning Board, uh, or once this gets referred to the Planning Board, at that point, we'll have developed, uh, some plans and present it to them and, and they'll schedule a public hearing and we'll go through that process again. Uh, so, um, that's, that's our, that's our request.
Alright, well, you know, we went through this before and, and hopefully there'll be some changes that will make this project, um, you know, more appealing for the people in town. Um, did you question, yes?
No, I'll, I'll move that we, uh, refer the zone change from residence A1 to business for 916 William Street, uh, to the Planning Board.
Second.
And it's been seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Okay, unanimous approval. Uh, thanks for coming to us and we'll look forward to hearing more.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
Yep. Alright, and now we go to, um... Get in there, get in there. The, um, AARP, age-friendly, uh, commitment. There's a letter that, um, Dr. Levine, uh, had drafted. Um, AARP wants to, um, get a, get the same voting we had done to be an age, age-friendly, um, so Josh, you wanna explain?
I don't, I did not vote, I did not.
No, it's here. Oh, come in, come in, okay, thank you.
Hi. Yes, so actually, uh, Tom, that, that's a great point. I am just realizing now that we, uh, this letter is drafted as though Josh is still chair, so we'll have to change that signature line, but I think, you know, the, the discussion can still be the same, um, which is that, um, as you are all aware, the long-range planning process, which we are currently undergoing, includes a targeted engagement, um, strategy for senior residents in Long Meadow. And, uh, ultimately, all of the little individual strategies that make up that overall targeted engagement component of the plan will enable us to apply for and receive, uh, age-friendly designation from AARP. This is a continuation of something that, um, the, uh, Select Board started, and Tom and Mark, I'm wondering if you know what year, um, the Select Board actually started this process. There's no date on the policy, which I attached to the, um, your agenda so that, um, those who are not on the board at the time could see that this is, uh, this has some history with the board. Um, I don't know if either of you remember?
Well, it, it had to be, um, at least, it's five years ago, I would think, right? Wasn't Mary Angelina's chair or, or was it six years ago?
Five or six, something like that.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense. I was thinking sometime around 2018, so that, that lines up with, with the timeline that I had sort of pieced together. So, um, the, I attached that policy just, you know, as I said before, just to show that this is something that the Select Board had already decided that they wanted to do, was still in standing, and this is actually moving forward with the next step. I think you're also all aware that, um, maybe also around that time, around 2018, the, uh, town applied for, um, dementia-friendly community standards, um, from AARP. So that's like a complimentary piece to the age-friendly, but the age-friendly is the bigger designation. So, um, in summary, uh, the long-range plan process is going on for one more fiscal year. It'll end June 30th. And by the time it ends, we'll have met all of the, um, uh, strategies that we need to check off in order to, um, uh, qualify for the age-friendly designation from AARP. So what is before you tonight is that letter, um, from the Select Board as the chief, uh, elected body in Long Meadow to AARP announcing our intention to go through this prescriptive process that they've developed, um, which, uh, which will be led by our long-range plan process, our, our long-range plan consultants. Um, so I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about what those strategies look like or, you know, the timeline or anything like that, but I, um, otherwise, it might be relatively self-explanatory.
Well, you know, as we are sitting in the adult center, uh, is this, is this going by the center staff, the director of the adults?
Yes, so, um, the, right, the, the Long Range Plan Steering Committee, um, established an age-friendly task force that's running this programming specifically. And so I can tell you who's on the task, or at least some of the people who's on the task force. I do think I'm missing someone and I can't think of who it is off the top of my head, but, so, uh, forgive me if that person's watching. But, um, uh, it, in terms of town staff, Jim Layden, the, the Adult Center Director, and also Julie Pierce, the Adult Center Outreach Coordinator, are the two staff members who attend every task force meeting. We also have, um, Cheryl, the Long Range Plan Steering Committee and Planning Board Chair, um, uh, at those meetings. We have our two, um, uh, senior community liaisons who are the, um, at-large senior representatives on the Long Range Plan Steering Committee, so that's Terry Weiner and Cory Odent attending those meetings. Um, the Council on Aging Chair is also attending them, and then I, I believe there might be one other person, maybe from the Council on Aging and, uh, or, or some other representation, um, but that, that's the group that makes up the task force. So we have two staff members and then those other people, um, uh, advising the consultants on how to implement and do outreach for, um, these engagements.
Thank you. And, and any other questions from the board? Alright, so we probably would need a motion to agree to become an AARP age-friendly, uh, community. Do we have a motion for that?
So moved.
Okay, and seconded? Alright, further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Okay, unanimous. Uh, thank you for, for coming in here.
Thank you.
And now we, on the whole stretch, what do you got, 10 more items? No. So the Long Meadow Adult Center Community Fund has two applications, uh, for two one-day liquor license. One for, uh, Thursday, July 6th, and Thursday, July 7th. Does anyone wanna make a motion to accept those requests?
So moved.
For the archer and the summer seal, so a...
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Alright, approved. And the Glen Meadow is looking for a one-day liquor license application um, for a gala groundbreaking event this Friday, June 30th, from 3:00 to 8:30 PM.
The, the application is in error. It, it has, is the date of the event.
Yep.
The 15th, which is past.
They did not correct on the one, uh, whatever.
It was a 13th. Whatever it was, I just didn't wanna...
Yeah, it should say, there's a corrected copy that says 6:30, that was sent over to Chief Stock.
Okay, so we would look for a motion for a corrected date.
No, I think we just, we...
13th to the 30th?
I'm really happy to just approve this based on the date of the 30th, and, and that's what they get with, with their apply. So, I mean, alternatively, you gotta go back to them again and redo it. Just approve it for the 30th.
I think that's quite correct. They did give him...
They gave me an updated copy accidentally.
Okay, so on top of that, so, um...
Thanks. I'll, I'll move that we approve the one-day liquor license for Glen Meadow for June 30th.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? I didn't think it was gonna go that late at night. Okay, all those in favor? Okay, opposed? Or none? Alright, so, uh, let's see what we have next. And it is the goal-setting document, um, which we received in our packets, and hopefully everyone had a good time, chance to study it. And are we considering going to accepting this plan, right? If that's what we're hoping?
Oh, yeah, good, good.
Well...
Discussion.
Yeah, we haven't really had, uh, yet, for FY24. Um, and I also just wanna point out that, um, not all of these are my goals. So some of them on here have the Select Board listed, so this was also just a rough draft, so that we could have a conversation. Don't know if you wanna do that right now or if you want to.
Well, I, I have some things I'd like to add in my new weekend, and I wanna address that.
Well, it's 10:30. Um, do you wanna add them and then we can look at them and?
I swear, I could email them. We, we're not taking action, um, which we're not, right? As much as I know. Um, I'll, I'll just mention them quickly. Um, so what you have on here, the, uh, the town-wide Wi-Fi, I just, I, I think that, that should be a pretty some immediate priority, but considering how long it takes, I'd like to see it have a, a, a two, maybe. And, because we need to start forming our committee at least, start exploring there. Um, I'd like to finalize the LCTV agreement, which has now outlasted my chairmanship, um, amazingly. Uh, we can start addressing some HAA 5 concerns, which we heard about, and, and that's something that Dan's talked about. And then, uh, prioritizing, addressing the waste management, will I...
And then, uh, prioritizing, addressing the waste management, reliability and the communication, which has been at the forefront again, and especially with the summer months is going to be something we'll continue hearing about. And it was always something that is at our forefront. And, uh, so that's, that can be a goal, uh, select board and as well as town managers and DPW. So that's a big issue, at least the communication part, I think can be addressed quickly. Thank you. Uh, anyone else have some stuff you can just get on the list here?
I see that.
Have you?
I was gonna, just, just real quickly, I mentioned this to, uh, Lynn, uh, earlier. I, I agree with Josh about, uh, the need to start exploring town-wide internet. I just, you know, instead of Wi-Fi, I would like that to include fiber alone, because I think needs to be, I think, I, we can talk about this more later, but I think for, you know, many reasons, that's a better option and I want us to, you know, be exploring that. So, so I kind of amend that to, to include on town-wide internet, not just Wi-Fi.
So if the county concerned, how long the lottery?
Well, yeah, and I told, I told Lynn this, you know, I think for all the benefits it has, if it is going to be too expensive, I want us to have done our due diligence.
All right, thank you. And, uh, yeah.
Thank you. I, I printed that, this out earlier and it's pretty much the same, is what Josh said and what Denise said, um, as well, so, um, broadband, Wi-Fi, I mean, this is something that I hear constantly. Um, people are reaching out to me about this topic. Uh, more people are, um, you know, working remotely. I mean, do have, um, issues with connectivity in town. Um, I think there's a lot of, uh, residents that are eager to assist in the discussion as well. Um, so definitely want to make sure we highlight that. Um, also, um, trash collection, uh, improvements. Every single week that, that goes by, I have somebody contacting me, uh, rightfully so, about, uh, trash and recycling that's being left out, uh, week after week. And I, I, I don't, I understand there's issues with waste management staffing, but um, a lot of, you know, their side of the bargain, they're not living up to based on what we agreed upon, uh, about a year ago. Um, also, I'd like to take a look at just some of the various policies as well that, that might be outdated, uh, within, um, select board policies that we can take a look at. And, and just because I'm, I'm at the fields a bunch and keep, and I coach in town and um, people always come up to me looking at how we can make improvements, um, focus on storage of equipment, um, also the trash, um, and, and have more, um, you know, recycling bins and, and, and things like that. So those are just a few of them. I'm sure we, it sounds like we share a lot of the same, um, goals, but, you know, looking forward to having a discussion. Uh, the last one actually I wanted to mention, of course, uh, was water as well. So we taught, we spent so much time talking about water rates, very little, are we spending time talking about, um, you know, what's in our, what's in our water and making improvements to our water. So I completely agree with Josh and, and other residents that are bringing this issue up. It's complicated, but I do think we need to stop just focusing on the rates and actually start focusing on, um, improving, uh, infrastructure and the water that we're actually drinking. So, thank you.
All right, yes, in order.
Yeah, the one thing that, that I'd like to see us do is finish the recommendations from the, uh, charter review committee. There's still, there's a handful of outstanding recommendations that are getting old in the tube. I think we can deal with those fairly quick.
Well, the last time we was here, I think we asked, I kept saying, can we get through these? Can we get these off? No, we're not. And so, yes, the, the cycle continues.
And, and sorry, just one last thing. I, I think, you know, we brought this up before and I didn't see that's on the, on the list, but I'm looking at, you know, range was voting or some kind of reform, so we're not stuck in the situation we're stuck in this year where we're having three elections in five months.
Oh, you love that.
All right.
We're down.
I don't want to be.
Yeah.
I'll add this to the list. We can try to look at it.
Well, I don't want to be outdone by how many members in the board here, that they play, still on vacation. No. Um, so one is the issue of public health, uh, which is, again, planning for bike baths, bike lanes on streets that go to the town shops, that we should have pretty significant, um, progress in, in having bike lanes. You know, I know people go on the sidewalks, but, you know, you're really supposed to have bike lanes. And then the other thing would be places to lock bicycles. I mean, we have very few places to lock bicycles in the shops and various locations in town. And so if, if that could be looked at. And then there, the last thing is, is something I keep talking about is solid food waste recycling, um, finding a way to get people, it would save us a ton of money in terms of our, our trash hauling. If people were, even if they, if everyone just given a, a composting bin, it would save, there's no way it costs the town money. You know, we could give them a compost and then once a year you say, sign up for, um, the town to come and empty that bin and, and we could, you know, use the compost or do something with it, but I, I think that would be something that we could put on that list also. And, but thanks. We'll, we'll look forward to talking about this more in future meetings. Um, Lynn, did you have anything else to add to?
Uh, I did already add most of it. I think I had a few more things, but I lost track of what those were. They're in my office. It's all burned back in updated goal list. Couldn't have been.
Great, thank you. And, um, we are creeping through the goal setting. Oh my God, tell me where the last one.
Page five.
The select board meeting schedule. Um, I have a notion to approve the, the select board meeting schedule?
So moved.
So moved, second?
Or second.
Okay, no further discussion.
I think they should all be on Tuesdays.
All those in favor? All right, unanimous. Uh, ten forty-one. Just get used to this. Every meeting in a row, we're gonna go right to the end. All right, thank you everyone for, for who's watching at home. Uh, it was a great meeting. You'll probably want to watch this one two or three times. Maybe you'll get everything. Good night.
I'll move you again.
Yes.
A second.
And a second. All those in favor? We are adjourned.